All right, good morning to everyone.
Good morning.
We will start with the call to order and a roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners Woodin.
Here.
Teal.
Here.
Sparks.
Present.
Ponstein.
Here.
Peckler.
Here.
Oliver King.
Here.
Merchant.
Here.
McLeod. LaGrand. Coleman.
Here.
Hildenbrand.
Here.
Hennessy. Vice Chair Green.
Here.
Commissioners Diaz.
Here.
DeBoer.
Here.
Burl.
Here.
Boujat.
Present.
Breevy.
Here.
Baker.
Here.
Antor.
Here.
Chair Steck.
I am here.
Mr. Chair, you have eighteen members present, nineteen members present, two absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you very much for our invocation. I will call on Commissioner Woodin, and I think he's going to have his son do the invocation. Or maybe his father.
Good morning, everyone. So seeing that this is my, going to be the last opportunity I will have to provide invocation for, before this body as a commissioner, I decided to bring my father, Reverend Fred Woodin, since a number of other people have taken the opportunity while I've been here, I finally decided it was my turn. And since he's got grandpa duty after this, you've got the whole family. So without further ado, the Reverend Fred Woodin.
Many of you are of the Christian tradition, and you know that part in Scripture where it says, "His disciples asked Jesus how to pray, and He says, 'Pray like this.'" Did He mean those exact words? It's hard to tell. We use them often, but He really meant that we should pray as though we mean it, not the words, but the sentiments that matter. Therefore, I will speak from my heart in that spirit exemplified by the Rabbi from Nazareth. Thou who art our source and destination, who dwells within us and beyond, whose name is silence and presence, we are too bold to speak your name. Help us reach the promised world we felt as children and dream still as adults. Remind us that by your providence, not by our power, is there bread enough for all to be fed, riches of freedom for all to enjoy, and the security of justice for all to live in peace and be unafraid. Help us resist the desire to exalt ourselves by belittling those around us, for as the prodigal came to realize, we are made great by our willingness to be humble, and we become leaders only as far as we follow Thee. And let the people say, "Amen."
Amen.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for the invocation. I have some grandkids you could take care of, too, by the way. Our next item of business is special order of business, employee recognition, and I
Good morning. It is our pleasure this morning to recognize some of the amazing work that's done by our Kent County employees each and every day in service of our residents, businesses, and visitors. One of our core values is to provide high-quality service, and that's both to inside, you know, basically touchpoints, anybody we come into contact with, other employees, vendors, whoever that might be, and also externally to those who access our services every day. As I call people up, we will present the award, and awardees, please kind of line up either side here. We're going to do one picture at the end of everyone. I should mention, we have kind of a double award here today. We transitioned the responsibility for this internally, so we are playing just a little bit of catch-up today. But the first individual that we'd like to recognize is Deputy Ryan Guernsey from the Kent County Sheriff's Office, who was selected as one of our quality service employees for the first quarter. Join us right up here, Ryan. So I'll read, I'll read the nomination. So the individual who nominated Deputy Guernsey for providing high-quality service to our external customers wrote, "A few years ago, my car took a scary slide off the road, down an embankment, through tree branches, and stopped just short of a frozen pond. Thankfully, I was physically unharmed, and my car appeared to be fine. After being informed by AAA that the car was too far off the road to use their services, I called 911. Officer Guernsey arrived on the scene quickly, made sure I was okay, and parked his vehicle so I would be safe from the traffic on the road while we waited for the tow truck to arrive. Once the tow truck arrived, Deputy Guernsey was helpful to the driver to ensure he was also safe from passing traffic and had room to maneuver to pull his truck to pull my car up the road. Deputy Guernsey waited throughout the process of pulling the car up, and he and the tow truck driver looked it over and determined that while it definitely needed new tires, it should be safe to drive to the tire store rather than being towed, and he didn't leave until after I had pulled away, followed by a friend, just in case. All in all, the whole thing took about two hours. He was very professional, kind, and patient throughout. Having him there turned what started as a very scary and stressful situation into something manageable, and I am very grateful." Please join us in congratulating Deputy Guernsey for his notable contributions to the customers of Kent County.
Next, we're going to recognize Heather Huguen from the Kent County Animal Shelter, who was also selected as one of our quality service employees for the first quarter. The coworkers who nominated Heather for providing high-quality service to our internal customers wrote, "I have been volunteering at the Kent County, Kent County Animal Shelter for over a year. Heather has been welcoming and helpful. I receive prompt replies to my emails and easily able to volunteer. When I arrive, a dog is ready to go out on a field trip. It makes being a volunteer easy and convenient. It's also the best volunteer job I have ever had. Heather is the gatekeeper for volunteers. His passion for the job and commitment to the animals is amazing. You are fortunate to have such a committed employee." Another coworker wrote a similar statement. "Heather trained me to be a dog walker and does an excellent job with extreme patience training volunteers at the animal shelter." Let's join in congratulating Heather for his notable contributions to the internal
Third up this morning is Elizabeth Bartlett from the Kent County Prosecuting Attorney's Office, who was also selected as one of our quality service employees for the second quarter. The coworkers who nominated Liz for providing high-quality service to our community wrote, "Elizabeth Bartlett, an Assistant Prosecuting Attorney with the Kent County Prosecutor's Office, has shown exemplary service to her community through her thorough prosecution of," it'll be an unnamed criminal. APA Bartlett was briefed on the case in April of '23 by detectives with the Kent County Sheriff's Office. At that time, five victims of criminal sexual assault had been identified. APA Bartlett was quick to take on the case, working tirelessly to assist in the investigation that ultimately led to the arrest of the unnamed criminal in Florida in May of '23. APA Bartlett did not slow down her pursuit of justice for the victims. She continued to encourage further investigation and made herself readily available for any questions from detectives and victims alike. Leading up to trial, APA Bartlett began preparing this case three months prior to the set trial date. Preparation included hours of reviewing police reports, digital and physical evidence, strategizing with detectives, preparing exhibits, and most importantly, meeting with every victim in this case. Fourteen total victims were identified in Kent County. APA Bartlett not only took the time to meet with them, but build a rapport, learned about the individual, and focused on being your person for each individual. It was evident to the rest of us in those meetings that her compassion and empathy towards the individuals was her driving force behind her success and her career. APA Bartlett would frequently check in on the well-being of the individuals involved in her case. She answered any questions that arose and went out of her way to make them each feel heard, supported, and seen. At trial, APA Bartlett expertly navigated the multiple motions submitted by the defense as well as the continuous objections throughout the victims' testimonies. APA Bartlett strategized with her team to effectively bring in approximately 250 pieces of evidence to support her case. She guided each testifying individual through explaining their involvement. Perhaps most impressive was her ability to guide the victims through such emotional and powerful testimonies. APA Bartlett worked on this case from the moment she woke up to the moment she slept for two continuous weeks of trial. She was cognizant of the toll this type of case would take on the jury and took it upon herself to maintain a shortened schedule to allow the jury time to decompress. APA Bartlett maintained an uplifting, kind, gentle, and intelligent personality throughout the long two weeks. It was clear her goal was to provide justice to the group of courageous women who came forward. APA Bartlett delivered a heart-wrenching closing statement, obliterating the defense's argument on the victims being unbelievable. APA Bartlett emphasized that the unbelievable happens every day. The victims in this case held her in such high esteem, describing her as their hero and a barracuda. It was truly impressive to watch how her mind worked while she connected corroborating information from two weeks of testimony and wrapped it all up into her closing statement. It would be hard-pressed to find another prosecutor, let alone another human, who could digest and retain as much information as she did, then present it in a coherent and complete manner. It may go without saying, but this case would never have progressed as efficiently as it did or come to such a quick and justified conclusion had it not been for APA Bartlett and her willingness to work around the clock to obtain justice for these identified victims and so many more yet to be located. This case is one of the largest Kent County has ever seen. She single-handedly took on the role of prosecuting an individual who had ruined the lives of so many Kent County citizens. APA Bartlett is the epitome of a public servant. Her dedication to her community is unmatched. She is the reason this unnamed criminal will never be able to hurt another child again. APA Bartlett earned all 22 guilty verdicts delivered in this case. It is because of this I am honored to request that she be recognized publicly for her unwavering service to the Kent County community. Please join us in congratulating Liz for her notable contributions to Kent County. All right. Now, last but not least, we are here to recognize Tyler Schwerin from the Kent County Health Department, who was selected as one of our quality service employees for the second quarter. The individuals who nominated Tyler for providing high-quality service to our external customers wrote, "Tyler was informed, efficient, and took his time with us. He explained things in detail, answered our many questions, put us on a wait list so we could get a timelier appointment. He followed up with phone calls. He was pleasant and easy to communicate with." Another customer wrote a similar statement. "It's difficult to adequately express my gratitude for the compassionate coordinated care I received from Tyler at the TB clinic. When I was first diagnosed with latent TB, my provider told me that it may be several weeks before I was contacted by the Health Department and advised me to contact them myself. That turned out to not be necessary, as Tyler called me the very next morning. Immediately, his calm, cool demeanor inspired my confidence that everything would be okay. In each of our interactions, Tyler expertly counsels and answers questions. He conducts his consults as though he has all the time in the world to ensure that I have everything I need to be successful. When I had severe adverse effects a few weeks into treatment, Tyler coordinated follow-up care with ease, always providing anticipatory guidance, taking time to answer each of my questions, and arranging the next follow-up, ensuring that I knew how to reach him in between. When I was unwell, he checked in on me three times in a week, each time with compassionate reassurance and expert counseling. Tyler's empathy resonates through each interaction. He's an asset to Kent County Health Department and a credit to the nursing profession as a whole. Thank you, Tyler."
Well, that's the fun part of this job. I am told that the usual livestream of the meeting is, for whatever technical reason, not working right now. So we'll see if that changes. All right, let's move to the next item, which is public comment. This is the first opportunity for anyone from the public that wishes to address the board with respect to agenda items only, that is, items that you can locate and identify on the agenda. If you wish to address an agenda item, may do so at this time. We do have signup sheets, so we apparently have individuals who have signed up with respect to the agenda item comments. So if you do wish to do so, you will call it off and then identify yourself by, by what item on the agenda you wish to address.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For reference, at this time, we do have thirteen cards. And the first up, I apologize if I butcher anyone's name. Sometimes it's my fault, sometimes it's yours and your penmanship. First up is Daniel Scott.
Well, you got that one down pretty close, I'm sure. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, and Commissioners, and staff, and citizens behind me. I think your father left, but I thank him for the invocation. By the way, your first name means royalty.
What?
Yeah. We have disagreed on some issues, but I have seen your genuine concern for citizens of Kent County, Commissioner Woodin. And I wish you and your family all the best, according to the Lord's will, as you move on from here. My name is Daniel Allen Scott, longtime resident of county. But again, my real identity is I'm a follower of the Lord Jesus Christ. I just want to quickly address two of your resolutions. Once again, number nine, Ready by Five Funding. I was here last time, and I shared, and I appeal to you to give this money only to the working poor. Again, in my many years in the inner city of Grand Rapids, almost forty-five years, I've seen so many people that are in need of basic necessities, but they're in need because of a lifestyle they've chosen, a wicked lifestyle. And just to throw more money at them, or goods, gifts, without any accountability, I think is a waste of money. The Holy Scriptures declare that if someone becomes a true follower of the Lord Jesus Christ through faith in Jesus Christ, all their needs will be met. So if we could concentrate on getting them right with the Lord, we wouldn't have to help them financially. Again, I'd like to offer our free literature, both in English and Spanish, to any of the Commissioners here, or anyone behind me, that could describe how someone can become a follower of the Lord Jesus Christ. Real quickly, the other resolution, 9H, giving money to those that are addicted to meth and other illegal drugs. First of all, calling it a disorder implies that it is a disease. It is not. Again, it's a lifestyle decision to get high. And again, in my forty-five years in the inner city, I have ministered to literally hundreds of people addicted to certain drugs and alcohol, and the answer is not more medication. The answer, in my opinion, is the Lord Jesus Christ. And if you, if we, as a city and a county, could address that issue, wouldn't have to throw more money at it. Again, when someone genuinely becomes a follower of Christ, their decisions, their lifestyle changes. And again, I would like to help if you're willing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, next up, we have Martha Cooper. On deck, Madison McDowell.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Martha Cooper. I'm a resident of Grand Rapids, Michigan. I'm, I came here today to speak to, about the agreement with the City of Grand Rapids for lodging and excise tax allocation. I was pretty amazed when I saw the article in the paper that this thing had passed, and now we have to write it. Okay, so what I've been talking about at the City Commission, and I feel like I need to come to the county, because it is an issue that we all need to work on together, and that is the housing crisis. While I watch us pass something to generate millions for gentrifying our city with attractions, I also am very aware of the lack of housing that is not only affecting Grand Rapids, but all of Kent County. When this passes, it is likely to jack up rents. Okay, so what I've been talking about at the City Commission, and I feel like I need to come to the county, because it is an issue that we all need to work on together, and that is the housing crisis. While I watch us pass something to generate millions for gentrifying our city with attractions, I also am very aware of the lack of housing that is not only affecting Grand Rapids, but all of Kent County. When this passes, it is likely to jack up rents. They've already gone so high that we have a really serious crisis. The gentleman that was before me talked about lifestyle choices, but it's not a lifestyle choice to get old, and older people have no place to live, and we're not putting in any places for people to live. So not only do I want to charge you with the fairness of seeing that people are taken care of besides just fish in an aquarium, all of these things are fine, but I'm looking at what's going to happen to the community, and I believe that some of these funds can be used for public benefit, not just for the, not just for the gentrification, as I'm calling it, of having more attractions in our city. We are a city with human beings in it that need to live. So I came with an idea that I've read, and I see the other areas are doing things like public-private partnerships to build social housing. I saw an article in Vox magazine, and it was, "If Public, What If Public Housing Were for Everyone?" is the title of the article. There is, local governments trying a new way to address the housing crisis. In Montgomery County, Maryland, they've come up with a public developer model, and it's also being done in Atlanta and, and other cities that have a housing crisis. This is a nationwide crisis. It creates a revolving fund to help create publicly-owned houses, housing. They're, they put in a 268-unit apartment building called The Laureate, and I really hope that you will look into this. I'm just a person out here with a great care for my community, all right? And I want to look for solutions, and I want you guys to look for solutions instead of just ignoring this issue.
Thank you.
I suppose that's all I have. It's the Vox article, entitled, "What If Public Housing Were for Everyone?" Please look it up. It is a solution we can do right here.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we have Madison McDowell, and on deck, Madison Hillis.
Good morning.
Good morning. Hello, everyone. My name is Madison McDowell. I live in Grand Rapids, and I'm here today to speak on the visitor's tax and how I believe the funds should be allocated. Back in January, I set out to begin my thesis for my master's in music business, where I looked to understand the impact that local music has on the surrounding community. This entailed creating a music festival from start to finish in only three months. Now, as you can imagine, this was a lot to accomplish in a short amount of time, especially when you don't even have a venue to start. Luckily, the Four Star Theater was more than willing to help, and thus, the Four Star Sonic Festival was born, and the Burton Heights area of Grand Rapids became the backdrop for the measurement of community impact. The results of my thesis found that live music has both a positive direct and indirect impact on the community, with 64% of all festival attendees saying that it was their first time in Burton Heights, and 84% of all attendees saying that they saw other businesses in Burton Heights that would entice them to come back to the community. The Four Star Theater can clearly become a sustainable economic driver for the Burton Heights and Grand Rapids as a whole. However, this cannot happen without your help. My work with the Four Star Theater continues as we work to build the second annual Four Star Sonic Festival, which is anticipated to sell roughly 400 tickets, nearly three times the amount of tickets sold this past year. But it would make planning this event and all the events at the venue easier if funds from the visitor's tax were allocated to the Four Star Theater. Using the funds for necessary upgrades will make the venue more appealing to both talent and attendees when creating events. And the Four Star Theater is not a unique situation, as I'm sure there are plenty of other smaller music venues and arts venues that could benefit from some of the funds from this tax. However, they tend to get overshadowed when compared to some of the larger infrastructure within Kent County. So I implore you to really consider the smaller venues and art centers when deciding how to allocate funds. The Four Star Theater has not only had a positive impact on Burton Heights and thus Grand Rapids, but also myself and many others, as you will hear from today. The theater has given so much to so many people, whether it's a band's first time on a stage, a grad student's first time planning a festival, mostly by herself, or a sign of hope to a community that so desperately needs it. The list could go on and on and on of the things that these smaller venues have done for the surrounding community. But with your decision to allocate funds from the visitor's tax, that give, that give can continue. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next, we have Madison Hillis, and on deck, Brigette Close.
Good morning. Good morning. My name's Madison Hillis, and I will be speaking on the hotel tax. So in, in like the past, I've been starting to work with like the entertainment and like music industry, and I was, for the longest time, struggling to find an adequate venue that could actually, like meet something that I could actually put on a show for local artists and stuff. And Four Star Theater, they gave me an opportunity to actually have local artists have a chance to, you know, perform and express themselves in that way, and it's a community that I think is necessary to, to thrive, because the arts is a way to, you know, decompress from like the day-to-day stresses. And I know, like, with something like this, like recently, recently, someone mentioned, like with housing and, and everything, like how this can affect, like, prices of rent and everything going up. The truth is, is that, like, that affects that, but it also is important to have, you know, the culture of like music and things thrive like that, because, I mean, you, you go to work every single day, and then you want something to go home to, and, you know, the, the venue has really helped, you know, people who I know, like, that really want to make music and, and perform, and touring artists that could have an opportunity at a venue like this. But, yeah, I mean, I, I'm all for, you know, this to be put in place. this to be put in place and, and help venues that are smaller like this. But that's pretty much all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Burgett Close, and on, and on deck, Tim Rozz.
All right. Good morning. Before you begin, I'll just make sure you know that our audio is now working. Video is not, so.
Good job on my name.
Thank you. Good job on your penmanship.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning. I'm glad to be back with the county commission. I'm Burgett Close, and thank you Chair Steck and Commissioners for having us here this morning. I am also the Vice Chair of the Convention Arena Authority. I serve with several of you on the airport board. Thank you. And I'm a member of the Grand Action 2.0 Executive Committee. Actually, I've been there for almost 30 years. And I'm also the co-chair of the Amphitheater Building and Design Committee. So when I retired, I rewired. I didn't really retire, as you can probably tell. So anyway, I'm here today to speak, of course, about I, J, and K. But I also want to thank this board for what in my life was almost 40 years of economic development, collaboration, and partnership. Because you were the first, one of 13 founders of The Right Place. You were always with us at Grand Action when we built the arena and the convention center. And obviously, that partnership continues. And private-public partnerships really are what make this region different. And I know my former team member, Tim, is up next. We always talked about what makes this community different, and it really is private-public partnerships. And the amphitheater and the soccer stadium, of course, are the next big projects for the community to drive us forward. And when I was asked to participate again in the planning and execution of those projects, I did it because I believe this community is, as Forbes said, the best right-sized city in the United States. And if we're going to continue to attract the kind of talent that we're attracting and to grow our airport like we have, we need those assets to continue to grow. And so I urge you today, we voted 3% as citizens of Kent County. And I've spent the majority of my life in the United States in this county. And when I retired, people said, "Are you moving?" Absolutely not. I love it here. So I did it because I believe our future generations need to continue to grow this community, to make it successful, to make the region successful. So please, we voted for 3%. We need those 3% to make them happen, and not just these two, but the others that are probably coming along so that we can attract the talent and continue to be the city that, and the region that we are. So thank you very much, and it's great to be with you again.
Thank you.
Next up, Tim Rozz, and on deck, Kara Wood.
Good morning.
Good morning. Again, I'm here to speak on items I, J, and K. For those of you that don't know me, my name's Tim Rozz. I am the community Senior Vice President of Community Development for The Right Place. I've been with the organization about 16 years now. I do have to say, before my comments, I didn't know I was going to go after Burgett. And for her to call me a colleague is an understatement of the year. She has been a mentor for me for almost two decades now, so. So on behalf of The Right Place, I do want to provide our support for this important funding. As many of you know, coming out of COVID, back in 2001, we worked as a collaborative community to create what was called at the time the Transformational 12, which were 12 community, large community projects that we thought could, you know, change the face of Grand Rapids in the West Michigan area. These projects are supported by, by the funding that is proposed this morning. The funding will, this funding will be a key step in making sure that those projects become a reality. So what I asked this morning is that we remain committed to what we committed to as a group back in 2021, that these transformational projects will bring immense economic impact and economic growth, and more importantly, population growth to this state and to this region, and that we support this funding initiative in whole. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Kara Wood, and on deck, Josh Lunger.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Steck, County Commissioners and staff. I'm happy to speak in favor of items I, J, and K. My name is Kara Wood. I'm the Executive Director of Grand Action 2.0. I would like to express my interest and importance of the Commission levying the entire 3% expansion in the county's lodging tax, as passed by Kent County voters on August the 6th. Increasing the lodging tax to 8%, Grand Action 2.0 can continue its work in bringing two transformational projects to our region, benefiting residents from all walks and all generations. The Accrashire Amphitheater and Soccer Stadium are set to bring $1.2 billion in net new economic impact and over 1,200 new jobs to our region over the next 30 years, as well as spurring hundreds of new housing units. We have experience and a proven track record in this work. And in addition, we would support the Experience Grand Rapids effort, who has created our region into a destination that people want to visit, live in, work in, and play in. And it's crucial to continue to draw tourists to our region who will ultimately be paying the lodging tax that was voted. I encourage the Commission to accept the new operating agreement with Experience Grand Rapids, allowing them to continue and expand their efforts in our region. Lastly, I want to express that Grand Action 2.0's projects are collaborative and only made possible by public-private partnerships, as Burgett mentioned. Kent County is an important part of that partnership. And I want to thank the staff and the Commission for being engaged in this process throughout the planning and work to date. This amount of investment will, will cover the remaining public support necessary for both projects, and is a signal to our private donors that the public support is on track and consistent with what was approved in the successful ballot measure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Josh Lunger, and on deck, John Farisberry.
Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Commissioners. Josh Lunger, Vice President of Government Affairs for the Chamber, here to speak to the same items. I just, the level of excitement we've seen for these projects and for the actions that you are advancing today is probably the most I've seen in my 13 and a half years at the Chamber. We represent nearly 3,000 employers across greater west Michigan. And our, our mission is to advance a thriving and prosperous region for all. And I would say that this, maybe more than any other unique actions taken in the last generation, are our generation's contribution to that thriving and prosperous region. I think when I talk to colleagues across the country, there are very few communities that are doing the big things we are, particularly post-COVID with the challenges that communities, especially urban metros, face. We are so fortunate that we are staying committed. We are staying collaborative. We are still advancing public-private partnerships when everything else has seemed to get more challenging. But the big things are hard, and I think a lot of the folks speaking today, a lot of the folks around this table, I want to thank you for your level of commitment. Every, it feels like every week with these, this work, there's a new crisis, there's a new thing. But what's great is we, we stayed committed, we stay together, and we continue to deliver. This isn't a leap of faith. We've proven that our county can do this. And again, we've talked about it throughout the campaign. This is the tax that our residents don't pay, but they will certainly benefit for it. The, the economic impact, it goes so much further than the boundaries of these projects. When you look at the transformation that's going to occur in the heart, it has a tangible benefit across the county and across west Michigan. So I just want to, again, indicate our strongest support for these items, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Next, John Farisberry, and on deck, Aaron Wilson.
Good morning. Good morning, everybody. Miss Lisa, I'm going to apologize to you right now. My penmanship is horrible. My name is Joshua Fordenberry. Joshua Fordenberry. You said it with so much confidence. I might have to pick that up as another name. Good morning, everybody. I'm also here to speak on items I, J, and K. For those of you that don't know, this is the first time seeing me. I'm one of the assistant store managers at your local Lowe's. To jump right into the topic, the Four Star Amphitheater is something that has, we've had a great partnership as far as Lowe's is concerned. If, many of you might not know, there is a hometown program that Lowe's has, which this time last year, they were the largest grand tour of. Honestly, with that, I mean, it's, it's, it's really impactful to be able to provide something to the community. Being someone that works for a large corporate enterprise, being able to see something grow, being able to help out with the community projects such, such as this, is really something that is awesome to see. Bringing in new traffic, I myself am not a Kent County local, but obviously, I do work in this, in this environment. Being able to see the community grow, being able to provide something back to that community is something that's truly amazing. I've heard and seen nothing but good things from this amphitheater. It can, it can only improve the area. Back in my hometown of Lansing, we have a, we have similar situations where, you know, we're putting money back into the areas of our, of our city that just haven't really been appreciated, and that's been bringing in new traffic, been providing new opportunities for everybody, and creating not only thousands of jobs, but places to live and, and new environments to see. So seeing that grow here in, in a place that's not necessarily my home, but my home away from home is something that is, is deeply impactful for me. So being able to help with and provide that has only been just a truly great experience. So I ask that you all just consider that and, you know, look forward into the future as you create a, a new surrounding for everybody that lives in your community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Aaron Wilson, and on deck, Hugh V. Claudine.
I will also indicate that, for those of you that want to make sure your hair looks right, we are back on video. No pressure.
Hi, my name is, I'm sorry. My name is Aaron Wilson. I live on the southeast side of Grand Rapids, and I'm here to speak about the I, J, K, the Hotel Excise Tax. I, I do volunteer and project work at two smaller theaters, or venues, the, the Hermitage and then Four Star. And I worked at a third smaller venue and served as Michigan's representative to the League of Historic American Theaters. So I toured probably 10 cities the size of Grand Rapids, and there were two that stuck out to me as places where I would like, consider living. And when I thought about it more, it's because it was Minneapolis-St. Paul and Atlanta, because they had a real intentionality about making sure that the smaller venues were part of the ecosystem that definitely included the larger venues as well. But with regard to this particular tax, the, having some intentionality around providing some of the funds be distributed to the smaller venues, it goes to the identity of a place where, when you have venues that are at a certain size or smaller, people can create things and present them and interact with people. Whereas in cities that only had the larger venues, which were really important, but a lot of times, they were bringing in artistic acts, and people were coming in to see them, but it wasn't necessarily about the, the place itself or creating its own character or identity. So I, I found it to be very beneficial for cities when I've observed that they take it seriously, that there is some intentionality around the smaller venues, like, for example, the Hermitage and the Four Star, where not only can local people present things to the community, but other people that come in to maybe see the larger events can pick up on that right away. It's kind of an energy that is undeniable. So I think that we would do ourselves a favor if, if we took into consideration that those smaller venues, while their budgets are smaller, are probably more vulnerable in terms of, of needing a small amount of investment to make sure that they're around for a long time and available to people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Hugo Claudine, and on deck, Mike Gusweiler.
Good morning.
Good morning. How's my hair look? My name is Hugh Claudine. I'm an artist, I'm a promoter, a producer. I've been working with Four Star Theater as well, bringing acts from all over the world to provide shows here in Grand Rapids. And the way I usually do them is I combine bringing a big-name star like David Murray or Cahill Elsabar, and then putting a local act before them so that the local acts are uplifted, they feel represented. We've known that a lot of the smaller venues, like Aaron said, provide services like that in the community, but that also keeps crime down, it fortifies the community, it creates opportunities for the restaurants that are around the smaller venues, which there are like tons, at Gallery, the DAK, Wealthy Theater. There's a lot of spaces that we're not utilizing to their full extent already. Also, opposition to the tax hike for the simple reason that it goes against the tenants' rights to the city, which is something that we should all be familiar with. We have limited resources in public space, and when we give opportunities that disproportionately benefit a few, the public space is blurred. The lines between the private and the public are, are blurring all the time. And these are decisions that have long-term effects. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mike Gusweiler, and on deck, Rick Nguyen.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, Chair Steck, Mike Gusweiler, West Michigan Sports Commission. It's always a pleasure to present our annual report to you on the impact of the West Michigan Sports Commission. Today, I'm here to speak on public comment on resolutions I and J, respectively. As I've mentioned to you in our annual report, we are created from this body to have an impact on the lodging tax through sports tourism. In our 17-year history, we've done just that and done great work. You know, through that, we, we enjoy working with our partner, Experience Grand Rapids. We enjoy bringing infrastructure into our community. We built, own, and operate the Meyer Sports Complex, which we're under a campaign right now to improve and expand and bring more impact into our community and vibrancy and quality of life. And we're averaging well over 100 events on our event calendar that brings 80, 90 million dollars of visitor spending. So certainly significant impact. We were brought into the Destination Kent Campaign to advocate for the lodging tax increase and the amendment. I'm encouraged by the amendment that it speaks to sports complexes because beyond the transformational projects that are named here, I think there's great work that we can continue to do to have a growing impact on our community and on this county. We're funded by a contract with Experience Grand Rapids. And so certainly, I advocate to all of you as you look at the contract that you have with Experience Grand Rapids to consider the work that we're brought in to do and the work that you're considering to improve our local economy that you think about the West Michigan Sports Commission, you think about Experience Grand Rapids, and our collective work to bring more visitors into our community. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Rick Nguyen, and on deck, Marcus Rignolda.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I am Rick Nguyen, President of AHC Hospitality. Also, you're appointee to the CAA, so thank you very much for that. I'm here to speak in favor of I, J, and K. I urge the county to levy the full 3% in the lodging tax. As everybody is, most people have been saying, it's going to benefit the region in so many ways. And actually, since I'm the hotel guy, this is going to put more heads in beds in our regional hotels and create more jobs for the hospitality sector, so that's good. Also, the new agreement between the county and Experience Grand Rapids is so important because we need an aggressive marketing campaign, not just for these two assets, but for everything that is in our region so that people will visit here, stay in our hotels, shops in our businesses, and really utilize everything in the local economy. So by allocating these funds generated by the lodging tax to venues like the amphitheater and the soccer stadium, we just become that much more competitive with everybody else that we're sort of fighting with to get people to visit our city. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, Marcus Rignolda, and on deck, John O'Connor.
Good morning.
Good morning, Marcus Rignolda, Gaines Township resident, here to speak about the Hotel Excise Tax. I want to thank many of my friends who are here and have yet to speak for coming here. You guys are rock stars, some of you, literally. So to cut to the chase, I'd like So to cut to the chase, I'd like you all to consider a 5% set aside for smaller venues. You all know the state, what the statute says, and I've been assured over multiple years that venues like The Four Star would be eligible. You know, not just The Four Star, but like The Wealthy Theater in East Hills, The DAC in the Creston neighborhood, or similar ventures in other Grand Rapids neighborhoods, towns like Ada, Belmont, Byrnes Center, Caledonia Cascades, Cedar Springs, Lowell, Granville, Kent Woodwalkers, Spartit, and Granville. When I was a teenager, Old Kent Ballpark was built and Van Andel Arena was built. And I was at opening day. It was an amazing thing. These big projects have tremendous benefit. I remember when Van Andel Arena was doing its campaign, my dad bought a brick, put our family's names on it, and what a cool thing to be part of this community that long and see the community come together for projects like that. And we should celebrate the vision and the tenacity and the passion of the people who bring these projects together. They are admirable. The ballpark was built without any public funds, something like less than $10 million, and this place had a half million visitors in its first full year of baseball. Van Andel Arena, 75% financed with municipal bonds, what an ROI. You guys probably know those were all paid off, 20-plus million of philanthropy. Amazing. They averaged a million visitors a year for their first five years in operation. I think there's lessons to be learned from these scenarios. And we're talking about an amphitheater and a soccer stadium. They will have benefit, but it's anyone doing a cost-benefit analysis. A massive increase in budget since this was first presented to you, and with that increase in budget has come an increase in the Hotel Excise Tax. That is eligible for any music hall, auditorium, et cetera. And I'm just asking you to do that analysis, 5% set aside. I should be asking for 50 for smaller venues. Those will have transformational impact. So there was a massive PR campaign around some specific projects, but it's your job to write how that policy gets implemented, and I hope what you're hearing today, that you consider a 5% set aside. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, John O'Connor and on deck, Luke Dean.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Chairman Steck and Commissioners and staff. I'm here today to speak in favor of items I, J, and K. My name is John O'Connor. I'm a First Ward City Commissioner in the city of Grand Rapids, President of the Commission, and a small business owner here in Grand Rapids. Mayor Bliss sends her regrets that she can't join us here this morning due to a previous commitment out of town, but she did want me to extend her thanks to all of you for your hard work and consideration of these important initiatives that are vital to the continued success of our community and our region. It's hard to imagine Kent County without the development of the arena, the performance hall, and the convention center. These projects, spearheaded by Grand Action, turned a city that shut down at 5:00 PM into a thriving urban core with new restaurants, hotels, exciting businesses and cultural opportunities that continue to produce millions of dollars of economic impact for our region every single day. These projects would not be a reality today without the strong public-private partnerships in which the county government has always played a vital role. Today, we have an opportunity to continue the strong traditions of our region by embracing public-private partnerships once again and the catalyzing positive impact they create by increasing this lodging tax to the full 3%. To continue to be the bright light in Michigan, Kent County must continue to invest in our region to increase our tourism draw, to retain residents, and to revitalize our most important natural resource, our river and our riverfront. Projects like the amphitheater and soccer stadium will benefit local businesses, create new jobs, spur much-needed housing development, and draw new patrons into our region to expand economic opportunities. I urge you to support items I, J, and K as they are the next steps necessary to take our region to new and better places. Thank you all for your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
Next, Luke Dean and on deck, James Hughes.
Good morning. Morning. My first time doing something like this. My name's Luke Dean. I've grown up in Grand Rapids primarily on the southeast side, not far from The Four Star, so of course I'm going to touch on that a little bit. I am speaking on the Hotel Excise Tax and advocating for some of those funds to be directed towards small venues in our city. I also want to echo back to the call for more affordable housing and just, that's not what my words are primarily on today, but housing is something I've always struggled with, housing stability throughout my youth and into my adulthood, and it is a crisis and that does need to be kept in mind. But today, I want to talk more about the community impact on especially working class, working poor people like myself in these neighborhoods like the southeast side. For me, growing up, I was getting involved in DIY music, and for over 10 years, I've been booking touring acts from all around the country, all around the world, since I was in high school, and bringing them to Grand Rapids. A lot of these people have become friends, they've gone on to now tour stadiums, win Grammys, things like that, but they all started here with independent promoters at small venues with people like myself, at places like The DAC, The Four Star Theater, The Pyramid Scheme, The Wealthy Theater, other places that have been mentioned. I think that these places give a key point of entry to self-expression for young people, which is something I really needed, and it gives people a sense of an identity as a group and a positive one around creation. And on any given night, I could book a show. For example, I booked this band called Spy out of the Bay Area last year at The Four Star Theater, and I saw hundreds of young people celebrating their lives and dancing together and having a sense of purpose in a really healthy way and growing our community from the literal ground floor up. And for me, I think that's the most important thing to keep in mind as we think about a lot of people coming here. Yes, there are touring artists, yes, people will come here, but I think we need to keep in mind the people that exist in our neighborhoods and the things we do afterwards. We all roll out after shows at Four Star to places like Tacos El Cunyado and fill up the businesses. After shows at The Pyramid Scheme, we fill up Stella's and we support those businesses. Before shows at The DAC, we stop into Gaia and we support those businesses all around our city. So I would just like to advocate for some of those funds being directed towards these small venues so that promoters like myself can keep investing in our communities for people of all backgrounds, identities.
Thank you. Well done for your first time.
Next, we have James Hughes and on deck, Devin Ross.
Good morning.
Good morning. I am James Hughes, Kent County resident, Director of Triumph Music Academy as well as owner of Triumph AV, and I'm speaking on the Hotel Excise Tax. As an involved community member who has worked on everything from school board campaigns, local festivals, music series, corporate clients, and city contracts, I, as an experienced audiovisual engineer, I have seen the impact that not only, I've seen the impact, not only have these, that these events have had on our community, but also what it takes to put on a successful production even at a small scale. As you've experienced this morning, audiovisual technology can greatly impact an event. Good AV is AV that goes unnoticed until something goes wrong.
You aren't responsible for that, were you?
Only for the DGRI meetings, yeah, not for this one.
Yeah, extra 15.
Yes, thank you. Places like The Four Star, The Hermitage, Wealthy Theater, these are all capstones of their communities as evidenced by the other speakers here. And they, this sort of technology is very expensive. So for a request that has already been put forth by Marcus here for 5%, seems pretty reasonable and could greatly impact these community collaborative spaces. Specifically, I've done events at Wealthy Theater, I've done events at Four Star, and I mean, these places host, you know, like this music school that I have, you know, they host student recitals, quinceañeras, school dances, film series, like, I mean, so many impactful things. And there are numbers behind that, so I also make a strong urge to consider allocating funds from the visitors' tax for these smaller venues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Devin Ross and on deck, Shontay Paul.
Good morning.
Good morning. Hello there. My name is Devin Ross. I've been a Kent County resident for over 18 years before attending film school and building a career in Los Angeles in film and comedy. I am here to speak on behalf of Kent County's smaller venues receiving a portion of the funds allocated from the visitors' tax. These smaller venues deserve to be included for the sake of the county and the overall accessibility of Grand Rapids for out-of-town talent. As a comedian, we look for spaces between performance halls and amphitheaters. We need them to grow and truly engage with our local community. Beyond that, many prominent comedians do not historically prefer Grand Rapids as a tour stop, often excluded from tours in what is an uncomplicated booking process for comedy venues. This lack of well-funded in-between spaces is often overlooked or ignored, leaving missed opportunities for developing our own talent and bringing in rising names elsewhere. Los Angeles takes smaller venues, even dilapidated ones at that, and creates hallmark staples like the New Beverly and the Vista Theater. As a lover of film and as a filmmaker who works with local musicians, places like The Four Star Theater are incredibly valuable and deserve the funds to be its own hallmark in our community. The financial value speaks for itself, and when I first stepped into The Four Star, I felt for the first time, since returning to Michigan, hope. Hope that returning to Michigan was truly the blessing I knew it was going to be because we all have the ingredients for that same slice of hallmark greatness here. If we properly value these venues for what they provide, the economy and culture, it makes just as much economic sense, if not more, to have them included in the allocation of these funds. It is a pleasure to see people come together for this common integral goal, sorry, the people who fight for these smaller venues to reach their full potential, to remain a love staple, do it because they love this city. They love enriching it and they need and deserve invigoration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Shontay Paul, on deck, David Jones, and in the hole, my last card at this time, Monroe O'Brien.
Good morning, everybody.
I'm Shontay Paul, community activist, comedian, businesswoman. I am here today to speak about the amphitheater. We have historical buildings that are already here in the city of Grand Rapids, Michigan, Four Star Theater being one of them, as well as The Wealthy Theater. We have people that have volunteered their time to not only reinvent those locations, but also create jobs for people that already are in the community. Having an amphitheater where you have to invest over $180 million just to even get it off of the ground and running, when we already have historical buildings that are already built and ready to go in the city of Grand Rapids, would be an injustice to those who are currently in there working. As a comedian and booking other people to come to Grand Rapids, Michigan, we want to make sure that we give them an opportunity to be able to experience the richness and the culture that we have currently. Being able to continue to give the people that are working there the jobs and to make sure this community feels welcome, when you sit there and you make it to where we have to wait for other buildings to be made and more hotels and more things like that, it just really seems to me that the money is not being distributed in a correct manner, I would say. Even if the amphitheater is to be built, taking out a certain percentage for the venues that already are here would not only help those venues stay active, it would create more jobs for the youth that are coming up in the community as well. Being able to perform in such places that are historical is such an enriching feeling, and it's a beautiful feeling to be able to do so, especially in neighborhoods that most people would say are considered ran down, but because of, like I said, the volunteer work and the different people in the community that want to see the community grow and get back stronger have put so much work into these types of venues. Also, being able to create effective partnerships with the BIPOC people in the neighborhoods and making sure that they have voices and can be heard in such places like these. A lot of times, the BIPOC community does not feel welcomed and they feel that they cannot speak, or if they do vote on things, all it will do is be overturned. So I'm here today to speak for those who feel they can't speak, those who want to speak, those who couldn't speak, and those who are speaking. And we just hope that all the information that you're hearing today will just be collaborated and taken into consideration, and we appreciate everybody that's sitting here listening to these very effective, essential comments here today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, David Jones and on deck, Monroe O'Brien.
Hey, good morning, everyone. My name is David Jones. I'm a comedian, also a producer of comedy shows throughout the city of Grand Rapids. Not just financially, but we do comedy shows to increase laughter among people who may need it, not just through physical, but mental health. With laughter, it helps reduce stress, it helps increase endorphins and things of that nature that people in our neighborhood currently need right now. There's a lot of depression, there's a lot of people who are going through things that we may not understand, I mean, on the verge of even suicide, but we know if they come to our comedy shows and there's just one ounce of laughter in them, we give that as a light showing that there's still some life into it. And in order for us to continue to do that, we need places like The Wealthy Theater and The Four Star and places who make their venues accessible to people of the community to help the community out in ways that this can't be seen necessarily through, you know, 2020 vision, but it's also something deeper inside that they need help with. And we just love that we have places like The Wealthy or Four Star that gives us the platform to help these people laugh, help these people overcome anything they may be going through, whether we know it or not. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Monroe O'Brien.
Good morning. Hey, good morning. How you doing? Greetings, boy. How you doing today? My name is Monroe O'Brien. I'm a resident curator of The Four Star Theater. I met Marcus like two years ago. I showed him love, he showed me love, and we've been starting to curate different events. I'm here for the hotel, to expand the hotel tax, to bring it to the Burton Heights District. The Four Star Theater has been committed for the years right now to try to give the community a professional experience. We're in different phases and milestones of The Four Star Theater. We have, we have the marquee that's coming up, we got the HVAC system that's coming up, we got a green room that we're trying to fix with having stars. Me, as a curator, I had to like several events. I did the auto transportation that was sponsored by the College for Creative Studies at Detroit, Michigan, where we had like, I gotta say, I'm sorry, we had like model cars made by students that showed to the GRPS and Kentwood what it's like to have a different dynamic of framing. Just getting a little nervous, I gotta get back to work. Also, I just finished doing the Black Cowboy event, explaining to the culture that there's black African-American cowboys that's in the community. We had a mechanical bull competition, we had line dancing competition, everybody had a good time, so I always like to deal with the community, I'm always about the community. Our future events in '25 and '26, and actually this year, we're trying to bring DJ Spin Rella from the legendary Salt and Pepper to the theater, and we need hotel accommodations to accommodate different stars that's going to be in the city. I think it's very well, I mean, I think it's a very well good idea to have the expansion at the city. Eventually, I'm going to have like a Caribbean concert city that's going to happen also. So, yeah, once again, my name's Monroe O'Brien, and thank you, and hopefully you can check it out and give it a consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have no more comment cards at this time.
Oh, so, anyone else here wish to address the commission on an agenda item and did not sign a card but still wishes to address us? May do so at this time, you have up to three minutes, and we have exhausted it. Good, all right. Thank you all. We'll now move to our next item, which is seven, Consent Agenda, and I will call on Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. It is my pleasure to move the consent agenda of today's date.
Thank you. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Antor. Questions or comments from commissioners on this motion? I see none. This is a roll call. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Wooden, Teal, Sparks, Ponstein, Pakla, Oliver King, Merchant, McLeod, LeGrand, Coleman, Hildenbrand, Hennessy, Vice Chair Green, Commissioners Diaz, DeBoer, Burl, Boujack, Brevi, Baker, Antor, Chair Stack.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have nineteen yays, zero nays. The motion passes, the consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you. We'll now move to item eight, our resolutions, and I will call on Commissioner Oliver King.
Thank you, Chair Stack. I'd like to-
Can you turn your mic on? I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chair Stack. I'd like to move that Resolution 91 of today's date, fiscal year 2025, Ready by Five Millage Funding Allocation, which is brought to us by the Administrator's Office.
Thank you. Is there support? It's supported by Commissioner Sparks. Questions or comments on this one? Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, this, we've been talking a lot about one valid proposal that happened in August, but another one was the renewal of the Ready by Five Millage. And just to advocate for, I mean, this was, you know, nearly sixty percent of our community supported this. This was a no-brainer when I was knocking doors this summer. And I just want to speak to the idea that somehow these funds could go to the undeserving, you know, these funds are supporting children, you know, children that are exposed to lead paint are certainly deserving of supports. And so, I'm really advocating this is a great model for how we do community work, and I really appreciate it. So, that's all.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Commissioner Pakla?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to extend my thanks to the team that reviewed these applications. I'll echo Commissioner Baker's comments about the positive impact of this millage. I think it does some really great work in our community. I'll also draw attention to the fact that we had many millions of dollars of requests that came through that were not able to be funded. And so, the more that we can do to connect these systems together, to find additional funds to serve our community, the better it can be. I'm looking forward to the work that we're going to be having on the Early Childhood Task Force upcoming in the next few months here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I will join in thanking the team that has worked so hard to make these allocation recommendations. I know how difficult that is. It's difficult to assess and also difficult, as Commissioner indicated, to sometimes have to say no. But and as well, thank you for the team from Ready by Five being here and supporting this. With that, I will ask the clerk to do the roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 91, Commissioners Wooden, Teal, Sparks, Ponstein, Pakla, Oliver King, Merchant, McLeod, LeGrand, Coleman, Hildenbrand, Hennessy, Vice Chair Green, Commissioners Diaz, DeBoer, Burl, Boujack, Brevi, Baker, Antor, Chair Stack.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have nineteen yays, zero nays. The motion passes, Resolution 91 is adopted.
Great. Thank you very much. We'll now move to the next item, and I will call on Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move Resolution 92, the fiscal year 2025 Senior Millage Funding allocations.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Hennessy. Questions or comments on this resolution? I see none, so I will at least again also thank you, the team that has put all the effort into making this allocation decision. Again, this is a huge challenge. I know they go through this every year. The team from Senior Millage is here, welcome. Thank you for being here. Thank you for all the work you've done, and I look forward to getting this approved. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 91, or 92, excuse me, Commissioners Wooden, Teal, Sparks, Ponstein, Pakla, Oliver King, Merchant, McLeod, LeGrand, Coleman, Hildenbrand, Hennessy, Vice Chair Green, Commissioners Diaz, DeBoer, Burl, Boujack, Brevi, Baker, Antor, Chair Stack.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have nineteen yays, zero nays. The motion passes, Resolution 92 is adopted.
Thank you. For our next item, I will call on Commissioner Oliver King.
I'm ready this time.
All right.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move Resolution 93 of today's date, fiscal year 2024 Adult Mental Health Court Grant Budget Amendment be adopted, brought to us by the Seventeenth Circuit Court.
Thank you. Is there support for that motion?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Sparks. Are there any questions or comments? I see none. This is a voice vote. All those that support the motion, please say yes. Those that oppose, say no. It is adopted. Thank you. For the next item, I'll call on Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. It is my pleasure to move adoption of Resolution 94 of today's date, the General Appropriations Act of fiscal year 2025. It comes to us from Fiscal Services.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Sparks. Pregnant pause. All right. Any questions or comments on the budget? Commissioner Pakla?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to thank staff for all of the information that we got this year on the budget. It was great to have that perspective and the transparency about all those pieces. Although I wasn't able to attend all the work sessions, I did follow-up on all of them, and it was, the information was clear and cohesive. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Hennessy?
Thank you. The lack of comment by us here does not mean that we have not seriously looked at all of the elements and been strong participants in the decision-making that was taken place. So, that's, our quiet quality is not to be taken as uninvolved. It's very, very involved. This is probably the most important thing we do during the course of a year, to set the budget for the following year.
Thank you. The fact that we're quiet is probably evidence of the fact that we've done awful lot of work leading up to this, and while it seems to go fairly perfunctory, tons of work, and thank you to Al and all of the staff, Jeff, for assisting us in walking through this. All right. If nothing else, this is a roll call. Madam Clerk?
Sorry to interrupt.
I'm sorry. Mr. Diaz?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to mention that, you know, we still periodically have members of the public coming and expressing comment about how we should spend any given funds. And periodically Administrator Vandenberg reminds the board and the public about certain, about the restrictions, the legal restrictions, and how we can and cannot spend funds at the county level. And so, I would just take this opportunity to express that, you know, if members of the public think that we should spend certain dollars one way or another, a potential idea would be to reach out to their state representatives or state legislator to give public bodies such as this more flexibility in how we spend the public's funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for underscoring. There are more rules than there are dollars. All right. Now, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 94, Commissioners Wooden, Teal, Sparks, Ponstein, Pakla, Oliver King, Merchant, McLeod, LeGrand, Coleman, Hildenbrand, Hennessy, Vice Chair Green, Commissioners Diaz, DeBoer, Burl, Boujack, Brevi, Baker, Antor, Chair Stack.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have nineteen yays, zero nays. The motion passes, Resolution 94 is adopted.
Thank you. For our next item, I will call on Commissioner Merchant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move Resolution 95 of today's date, fiscal year 24, County Revenue Sharing for Public Safety Funds, brought to us by Fiscal Services.
Thank you. Is there support for that motion?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Teal. Questions or comments on this one? I see none. This one is a roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 95, Commissioners Wooden, Teal, Sparks, Ponstein, Pakla, Oliver King, Merchant, McLeod, LeGrand, Commissioners Coleman, Hildenbrand, Hennessy, Vice Chair Green, Commissioners Diaz, DeBoer, Burl, Boujack, Brevi, Baker, Antor, Chair Stack.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have nineteen yays, zero nays. The motion passes, Resolution 95 is adopted.
Thank you. For our next item, I will again call on Commissioner Oliver King.
Again? Thank you, Chair Stack. I'd like to move Resolution 96, Federal Fiscal Year 2023 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, brought to us by Sheriff's Office.
Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Teal. Questions, comments? I see none. This is a voice vote. All those that support the motion, please say yes. Those that oppose, say no. It is approved. For our next item, I will call on Commissioner, I will call on Vice Chair Green.
Thank you, Chair Stack. I move the adoption of item number 97, fiscal year 2024, Michigan Commission on Law Enforcement Standards Continuing Professional Education Funding from the Sheriff's Office.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Brevi. Questions or comments on this one? I see none. This is a roll call. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 97, Commissioners Wooden, Teal, Sparks, Ponstein, Pakla, Oliver King, Merchant, McLeod, LeGrand, Coleman, Hildenbrand, Hennessy, Vice Chair Green, Commissioners Diaz, DeBoer, Burl, Boujack, Brevi, Baker, Antor, Chair Stack.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have nineteen yays, zero nays. The motion passes, Resolution 97 is adopted.
Thank you. For our next item, I will again go back to Commissioner Oliver King.
Me again?
Must have paid your dues.
Thank you, Chair. I move that Resolution 98 of today's date, Medications for Opioid Use Disorder Within Jails in Michigan Grant, brought to us by the Sheriff's Office.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Sparks. Did I get that right? Yes, thank you. Questions or comments on this one? All right. I see none. This is a voice vote. All those that support the motion, please say yes. Those that oppose, say no. It is approved. All right. Our next item, item I, I will call on Vice Chair Green.
Thank you, Chair Stack. I move the adoption of Resolution Number 99, Lodging Excise Tax Ordinance Amendment from the Administrator's Office.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Brevi. I will note for the record that Commissioner Merchant has identified a conflict of interest. We've reviewed that with counsel and accept that she is conflicted and will abstain from participating in discussion and vote. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Wooden?
Thank you, Chair. First question, just to clarify, as I was looking over the ordinance, I did see in section four, zero two, the exceptions, and it's, you know, states no tax shall be imposed here under, upon hospitals or nursery homes, continues to enumerate a number of different venues and organizations, but also exempts charitable organizations. Just to confirm, I'm thinking about our rapid rehousing efforts that often seek extended stay hotels. If an organization provides accommodations to someone who needs rapid rehousing through a hotel, is that organization exempt from the lodging excise tax?
Do you want to respond to that, or?
I would prefer counsel to.
Well, oh, the real counsel, yes.
Ouch.
Commissioner, we would have to look at that on a case-by-case basis, because as you laid out your scenario, it's a for-profit entity that is being temporarily in partnership with a nonprofit entity to provide those services. So, when that would come to us, like it did in COVID or something like that, I would work with the Treasurer's Office to make sure that we handle it appropriately in that context. But we wouldn't be doing a blanket-type situation. Well, and you remember too, that if it's longer than a month, that's an exemption.
Okay, that's helpful. And I also think I read in the enabling law, the county does have some latitude in their ordinance with essentially creating such exemptions, provided that they align with state law as well.
Right. So, it's up to our ordinance. We can go no further than state law, but if we wanted to put in exemptions along those lines.
You know, I, oh.
That's where we work with the commission and with the treasurer.
Yeah. I would at least, you know, I realize through the campaign and through others, it's very clear that this is a tax that mostly non-county residents pay, but those, a subset of those who do are those who are on the margins, are seeking rapid rehousing, have no other options, and an extra three percent can make a difference. And all we can do to help ensure that those folks are not adversely impacted by this policy, I think is a solution that we should continue to flush out, simply because it is a small subset, but for those individuals, it could make a very important difference.
Would you accept that we'll take a hard look at that and review it and comment?
Yeah. And then, you know, as I go on to further comments, I at least wanted to, I may dip into the other remaining items since they're linked, so I hope the chair would be, grant me a little latitude if I veer off to the other agenda items periodically as I speak to them.
You mean the common items?
Yeah, J and K.
Well, then you'll get another shot at it later, right?
I'll try to be more disciplined then. You know, as I look at this ordinance and the proposed increase, and what they have referenced as possible investments, and in these conversations about these transformational projects, I have often thought to myself that if I were to pick a way to pay for such projects, this would be the way to do it. As folks have mentioned, it's the tax we don't pay. It's also a tax that legally cannot go to other services. We are not redirecting funds that would have gone to vital public services. And moreover, because lodging excise taxes are more subject, are more adversely impacted by economic cycles, I would much rather have it go to funding a long-term payment schedule for public facilities than services or other public investments, because that allows us to take into account how it's more subject to economic cycles. Ultimately, I think, I'm prepared to vote for this. I am someone who came to this decision after serious consideration, both deciding whether to put this on the ballot, listening to the voters, and now coming before us. But I ultimately think that this is the right move to make, and would just urge that we find ways to flush out exemptions to ensure that those who seek hotels for temporary rapid rehousing are not adversely impacted. And then, to those comments about supporting smaller venues, I certainly appreciate it. I think there are absolutely ways we can support our neighborhood entertainment venues, our smaller entertainment venues. Personally, I do have a concern about using public dollars to support privately-owned facilities. But if we can find ways, whether it's through supporting festivals, supporting programming, supporting events, I certainly think that's something worth consideration. And hopefully, as we discuss our other agenda items, we can also get into the meat of that too. So, thank you.
Good. Thank you. I'll just say I have Commissioners Antor, Baker, Diaz, and DeBoer so far. So, if I didn't name you and just don't want to talk, let me know. But go ahead, Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Along with a lot of people, I'm suffering right now.
Along with a lot of people, I'm suffering right now from millage and tax fatigue. Seems like every time we turn around, we're being taxed for something. And even though this excise tax is being billed as something that won't affect us here, it does affect us because everywhere we travel around the country, cities, municipalities are implementing the same model. So we may not be getting taxed here, but if we go Detroit, Chicago, wherever, that model's in place. We're going — I just got back from Kenosha, Wisconsin, which isn't that big of a city, went there on a efficient trip, got a hotel for a night. It was like one of the worst hotels I ever stayed in. It was 160 bucks a night, and I didn't look at the breakdown of the bill, but my guess is there's quite a bit of excise tax built into that. So it's just from the fatigue. Right now, we're suffering from horrible inflation. Everybody's suffering the, you know, price of groceries, gasoline, everything else. So I don't know how people can afford to travel right now and stay in nice places because we simply don't have that disposable income. And this, along with all the other taxes, it's just like our fees, it's like, you know, death by a thousand cuts. So I'll be opposing it for that reason. One of the things I would like to see done somehow, if we ever get a windfall, is create some sort of conference event or convention center here. We're woefully short on space, and those truly bring people in from out of the area. I make the argument, people come to concerts downtown, probably aren't going to be staying in hotels. There may be some, same with the soccer stadium. I don't know, you haven't looked at deeply, but we are really short on convention and event space here, and those are people that travel from around the country, usually spend the weekend, spend a lot of money. I think millages continue to get passed just because so many people don't pay taxes. You know, the culture's changed. A lot of kids living in their mom's basements or simply renting downtown, and they tend to pass everything that comes down the pipe because they don't think they have to pay it. In some cases, they don't. So I'd really like to reexamine how we extract money from people in the future. I've been promoting events for over 30 years, and I've seen the positives that come out of that. And again, going back to convention or event center, we've literally put — we bring in hundreds, 400, 500 vendors each year, most of them need space, and we can't put a show on anymore. There's nowhere in this area to do a show, smaller, midsize shows. There's just no room at the end. So again, I want to look at that. Let's see what else I had written. I just scratched down some notes. The other thing is Experience Grand Rapids Sports Commission, they do outstanding work, and I appreciate everything they do. Their goal is to bring people into West Michigan, and they're doing it. And so this is not throwing shade at them. I'm just looking at this from a taxpayer's perspective, and like I said, I've got fatigue from paying all these fees and taxes, and so I am going to be voting no. This will be the last time I comment on this for the rest of the day, so I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you. We're up to Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I think it was pretty clear. This summer, I spent a lot of time talking to people. I spent a lot of time thinking about this, and my notes here reflect a lot of those thoughts as I was walking, but it's pretty clear when voters — there were certainly voters who were confused, but it was pretty clear since the mailers that were sent to people had a picture of a soccer stadium, and this passed that people were voting to support building a soccer stadium. And it would be — and we're being asked to, you know, approve the funding that would support this infrastructure development. There's also an infrastructure, though, that builds community from the ground up as it relates to sports. So we have a sports commission, we have the Meyer Sports Complex. There's a lot of public funding for sports in this community. So in — and I'm going to be a sociologist for a second, but, you know, I talk about in my classes that we can do things to consume culture, so we can go downtown and see concerts, but we also produce culture, we produce community. And obviously, our decision here will help produce the community that will be in existence for the next few decades, but we're not necessarily investing in an infrastructure that will lead to the arts infrastructure that we're building downtown as a consumer culture. So we have a sports commission. I think that lots of people are speaking today for different reasons on investing in smaller venues. When we first discussed this ordinance language, I was consistently asking, could we use this funding for venues other than downtown? I'd like to find a way that people throughout the whole county can benefit from this. I know that there will be economic impact. I'm not sure that the people who I spoke to this summer on the southeast side of Grand Rapids will necessarily realize or recognize the benefits economically or otherwise from these venues, but we could look for ways that people from Caledonia to Sparta to the west side of Grand Rapids benefits from this. And I — so for that reason, I would really like to discuss ways that we can begin public investment in an arts infrastructure that leads to the same kinds of outcomes as we currently invest in the sports infrastructure that leads to it, and I think that we will find this benefit. It's been discussed about people, you know, I spent many years in Chicago before I came to Grand Rapids. I saw theater on a consistent basis, rarely downtown Chicago. I saw there's a big blues festival, lots of people went to blues festivals, but I experienced the blues in lots of small neighborhoods throughout the city. There's a arts infrastructure in that city, and I think that for us to become — I'm not talking about next year, but in the next 50 years, a city that really is a community that's really thriving, we need to invest in allowing the people of our city to become producers of community, producers of culture, and not just consumers. Thanks.
Thank you. I will just make a comment. First of all, clarifying, the current motion is to determine, do we assess an additional 3%? That's merely a question, do we assess the additional assessment on hotel motel stays? The next motion will be addressing our contract with Experience GR. The third motion we'll look at today is a proposal to allocate some of that additional if it's approved. There obviously remains a lot of additional revenue that has to be addressed later, and can certainly assure you that I and Al will be seriously taking a hard look at the question of what's the subsequent allocations, what's the model that we should look at, and I'll encourage you and others, we'll set up a meeting that want to have that specific request considered and looked at and studied, to have a meeting next week to look at that issue.
Great, thanks. And I saw you for getting ahead of it. I understood those.
No, I understand. Commissioner Wooden started that, so. All right. Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, Chair. It took me about 10 seconds to find some information that I knew was true, but that I just wanted to find an example of it. I pulled up a study here on my phone, it's called, the title is Arts and Cultural Engagement: Reportedly Antisocial or Criminalized Behaviors and Potential Mediators in Two Longitudinal Cohorts of Analysis. This study was released in 2022. The abstract, or part of the abstract of the study, says arts and cultural engagement is a potential strategy for reducing or preventing reportedly antisocial or criminalized behaviors. More arts and cultural engagement was associated with fewer reportedly antisocial or criminalized behaviors, better self-control scores, and fewer positive perceptions of reportedly antisocial or criminalized behaviors concurrently and one to two years later. So why am I talking about this when we're talking about a hotel, motel, excise tax? We have had the county sheriff tell us multiple times throughout the past couple of months, the last couple of years, that we are not seeing the same trends in crime in our county that we're seeing in other parts of the country. Our crime rates are not going down as fast as they are in other parts of the country. A lot of this is due to the fact that a lot of young people are unfortunately getting themselves into crime. I believe the last time the sheriff was here, we were talking about the fact that we don't have enough room to put the young people who are getting themselves into crime, potentially talking about having to build a new facility to accommodate them. The study shows clearly that if we make investments that keep young people from getting into crime, we all benefit. I don't know how much money has gone into these projects already. I think the figure that I found for the amphitheater specifically is over $60 million in public money. I know, as I said before, that there are certain restrictions on where we pull money from and how we use it, but I think we need to reevaluate what our priorities are. Are we, again, building a couple of square blocks for people outside of this county to come and enjoy themselves, or are we supposed to be doing what's best for our constituents and the entire county? I think that's something that we need to ask ourselves. So with that, I am offering an amendment to this resolution. You all should have it in front of you. The amendment is to insert this following section above the last be it further resolved in the current resolution. The portion that is added would read, be it further resolved, that a portion of the revenue generated from the lodging excise tax shall be set aside to be used for eligible activity throughout the county of Kent, with an emphasis in neighborhoods that have not received lodging excise tax funds in the past. And that is my motion.
All right. I'm going to respond, but I'll see if it's seconded before I respond. Is there a support? I see no support. I'll respond anyway by reassuring, as I did to Commissioner Baker, that to the extent that there are questions as to what is the most effective and appropriate allocation, should this motion pass, will continue to be a matter of significant study and would invite you to come in and talk to myself and the Chair about that. All right. Any other — wait, Commissioner DeBoer, you're still on my list.
Thank you, Chair. I've been very torn on this issue. I previously voted against it, but with the ballot initiative, my constituent base did vote in favor for it, so I do not want to misrepresent my constituents, so I will be in favor of this.
Thank you. Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you. Like Commissioner DeBoer, my residents did vote in favor of this and are actually looking forward to, you know, the much-bailied soccer stadium portion of it. I would have liked to have seen the ordinance itself also take into effect the impact of these various big projects as they come into our neighborhoods by having what the city calls sometimes a good neighbor plan or a community benefits plan. However, you know, I'm being told, you know, and I'm seeing that that's — that they're not — that it doesn't necessarily have to be. I'd feel better if it was here and if it was in writing, that there'd be a structure to working with neighborhoods that are impacted, but will accept at this point, given the vote of the people in my district, that there will be that consideration given because, you know, the amphitheater is right across the river, the soccer stadium's right in the middle of a neighborhood, the zoo, of course, is, you know, is in the middle of a neighborhood as well, although not funded at this point, or it's suggested to be. Its aquarium, that would be located wherever, you know, might be. So, you know, I do think that this is important, that we continue to work, if not specified in this, continue to set policies and directives, that we do work with the communities that will be the most directly impacted as we allocate these monies.
Thank you. Wait, Commissioner Antor, let's see if anyone else has a first that they want to. Commissioner Pakla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A quick question, I think, for the administrator. You know, we heard earlier today in public comments and up here already from my colleagues' desire to look at the use of these funds for smaller venues. We also heard a potential desire to look at them for cultural and arts, you know, sort of experiences. As I read the ordinance and I look at Section 2.01(c) that defines convention and entertainment facilities, I see that both of those as eligible uses of the funds, should we, as the Commission, decide that that's the allocation per Chair Stack's conversation that's going to be convened shortly? Is that correct?
I believe that's correct, yes. I think that the whole process of starting what was a 5% increase in the hotel tax was initially requested, and in the cheese-making process in Lansing, it ended up being a 3%. But certainly, I think from the beginning, that was intended to fund these two major projects, but as we, Chair Stack and I have talked about and talked about with several of you, we do need to go through that whole process and discussion, and I think it should happen this fall, to just discuss where you want to target funds in the future and what are the benefits and costs of different decisions that you might make.
Great. My second comment is around the amount of information that we, as commissioners, have been given about this. I just wanted to commend the administration for all of that. You know, we had six engagement sessions that were run for commissioners. A significant amount of information was given to us, a significant amount of answers. I particularly appreciated, being a numbers wonk, the spreadsheet of the estimated lodging and excise taxes over the next few years, really understanding what are our commitments as it relates to bonding, what are our commitments as it relates to the conversations around the amphitheater, potential soccer stadium, and other transformative projects. Having those numbers laid out to us to show what's the minimum fund balance that we are targeting, what's our estimated fund balance was very useful from my perspective, so thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Stack. So the only thing I'll add is, you know, I don't have any problem with the wording. I guess an old phrase is, the devil is in the details. And I saw from the beginning of this that the county commission really wasn't brought up to speed quick, and the trains were already moving out of the station, so what input we had was more of a questions and clarifications, not any guidance. I think the people talking about neighborhood venues have got an outstanding point, and those same points came up through COVID. And if you had the influence to get things done, you got them done. If you were a smaller venue, some of them got it, most of them didn't. So, yeah, we've got to have a conversation this fall on how these dollars are going to be spent, but to a point that maybe Mr. Wooden made too, I said, there is a fund out there that uses public dollars for things that really we shouldn't be using, and these are these tax-captured districts called DDAs. And hopefully, when you get to Lansing, you can maybe address that because there's millions of dollars from our general fund that are being taken away by downtown districts, especially the one in Grand Rapids, is probably the largest. That takes away money where we could be spending it on our neighborhoods. I don't know when you travel. I try to steer away from the downtowns. The neighborhoods are more vibrant, you get to know the people, and there's some unique venues within those. I would love to see Grand Rapids and Kent County steer towards that.
All right. That almost seemed like lobbying before he's elected, but I understand that. Any other comments or questions? If not, we're back to the second one for Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair, for the second bite at the apple. With all due respect to my colleagues who spoke out about doing the will of the people, I'd just like to point out the turnout was abysmal, so I have no clue what my constituents were thinking on any of this because it's just, it's sad, and it angers me after the turnout we had. So I'm not going to pretend I know what the will is, but I think I do, and I think it's, again, tax and fee, millage, fatigue, and I think they're so frustrated because things keep getting passing, they're simply not turning out the vote. So with all due respect, I think I am representing my constituents by saying no to taxes. Thank you.
Sometimes not voting is voting. All right. Anything else? If not, we are ready for the call. If you will go ahead and take the role.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 99, Commissioners Woodin.
Yes.
Teal.
Sparks. Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Merchant.
Same.
McLeod, LaGrand, Coleman.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Vice Chair Green.
Yes.
Commissioners Diaz.
No.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Boujack.
Yes.
Brevi.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Antor.
No.
Chair Stack.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 16 yeas, two nays, and one abstention. The motion passes. Resolution 99er is adopted.
Thank you. For our next item, I will call on Commissioner Hildebrand.
You caught me off guard there a little bit. Let me get back to the agenda here. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move Resolution 100 of today's date, Experience Grand Rapids Agreement Amendment, brought to us by the Administrator's Office.
Thank you. Supported by Commissioner Boujack. Thank you. All right. Questions or comments on this one? Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you. I'm curious as to why we're moving this resolution today as opposed to waiting for the rest of the allocation for the fund. I don't see why if we're going to hold off on allocating.
I don't see why, if we're going to hold off on allocating these funds to these other projects at some point in the future, why we need to move this resolution today.
I think the main reason would be that Experience Grand Rapids does need to get moving on a marketing plan. They do research, you know, they'll need to add staff, the whole thing, to readily move these, to adequately market the amphitheater, which is on schedule for an opening date of May of 2026. And so the other factor is, if you don't take some kind of action, then they would automatically receive the 18.5% for the last year of their five-year agreement. So we thought it was more prudent to renegotiate the five-year agreement and to simply make it into a new six-year agreement. And so Experience Grand Rapids did agree to take a lower percentage of the total take, which, again, that's difficult for them because they need resources in order to pull off the marketing of these venues and everything else associated. And so we thought it would be best just to negotiate that right now. It's a 17% of the total instead of 18.5% of the total, which it would be per the agreement if there wasn't a change made at this time. And so that's the basic reason.
And I would say, as of five minutes ago, their planning going forward, I presumably would be 18.5% would be allocated to them because that's what their contract says. So when I tell them, unless we change it, that's what it is. And I suggest that the sooner we clarify what is going to be the percentage they may plan on, the more appropriate it is.
Yeah. I appreciate that. But as, you know, the administrator just let out, with all due respect, this project isn't going to be completed until years from now. And if we're going to make the, if this board is going to make the decision on how to allocate these funds two weeks, a month, two months from today, I don't see why we need to move on this at the moment. I definitely appreciate the fact that Experience GR agreed to lower the percentage of the funds that they receive. I think that's great. If I'm not mistaken, if I remember correctly, I think this still amounts to over $1 million extra that they would receive, given the new increase. And I would say, you know, that if they are in a huge need of funds immediately to begin the work of marketing these projects, then I think we should look at, or they should look rather, at how they're spending their funds. I heard through the grapevine that there are salaries for people, for a person, for what have you, about hundreds of thousands of dollars. I think the exact figure that I received or that I heard was over $400,000. The President of the United States, if I'm not mistaken, makes about $440,000 a year. So 1.5 million of an increase, given this change if it passes, as opposed to maybe reducing some salaries, I think that would get them through the next couple of months. So my preference would be to not make this, to not move this resolution until we make further decisions on how to allocate these funds, but I will not be making that motion. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? I think Commissioner Ponstein may have been next. That's not in our standing rules. Commissioner Hennessy, go ahead.
Commissioner Ponstein. I wanted, I was intrigued by Mike Gusweiler, the Director of the West Michigan Sports Commission's, his comments to us today, because one of my, you know, just want more information about is the relationship between Experience Grand Rapids and the West Michigan Sports Commission, especially because we are putting, changing this ordinance that we just did, we're putting sports complexes into the mix. So I am real curious as to what the funding relationship is and the proportions and, you know, how much, I'm, I mean, I'm still looking sports complexes, I'm thinking soccer stadium in the future, and I know today's actions are about the amphitheater, but I'm thinking ahead on the sports complexes, and I want to make sure with this increase that's going to be coming out right away, that the Sports Commission itself is able to do this, but I don't know what the relationship is.
So the question may be, if I can clarify it, is what is the contractual payment arrangement between Experience GR and the Sports Commission? The Sports Commission is stepping up, Mike?
Yeah. Again, Mike Gusweiler, West Michigan Sports Commission. So our relationship with Experience Grand Rapids and our contract parallels the contract term that you have with Experience Grand Rapids. We have not gotten into negotiation yet to see where this one goes, and then we will. But what we receive currently, and I'm going to throw a figure out there, I don't have the contract in front of me, I think is 9.4%, but again, we paralleled it to the current contract, which has stepped up for inflation and for bringing on more staff to accommodate and have the resources that we need to market the destination and the growth that we have. So that's where we're at, is 9.4% of what they collect, both in part through the lodging excise tax and the hotel assessment. As you pointed out, Commissioner Hennessy, you know, we were pulled into the Destination Kent campaign to look at how are we going to fill non-soccer dates with events that will put people in our hotels? And certainly, that's something that we're preparing for and we're eager to do with the passing of the lodging excise tax. I think that puts the soccer stadium on path to be built, and so certainly, that's a piece of our work in our marketing plan that we're preparing for. So thank you for your comment.
But I'm not asking you to negotiate your contract, depending upon what happens with this motion. We'll do that outside of this. All right. Commissioner Ponstein, do you believe you were next? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Steck. So this amendment's talking about money and how it's spent, and sitting on the National Association of Counties Board of Directors, I sit on the Arts Commission, one of their vice chairs, I get to travel around and, for some reason, meet a lot of travel professionals around the country. And I just want to say, every penny that we give to the Experience Grand Rapids puts us on the map. They do it in a professional manner, they do it in unique ways, different ways to get to different sectors. I think Doug and Janet, whether the fee was 17, 15, or whatever, I leave those negotiations to Al. It's money well spent, it's money that's spent wisely, and they are an asset. I think there's a lot of communities around this country, like a lot of things from Kent County, would love to duplicate what Experience Grand Rapids does. I'm very proud for them to represent. I've never been ashamed by anything they did or said. I've just been more than proud of the work they do, their whole staff. Over time, I've met most of them, but it's just an outstanding organization, and I'm not going to get into the way what the right fee or that is the amount, that's between our county administrator and negotiations with them. I'm not part of it, and I just want to let people know that these guys and gals do an outstanding job representing Kent County and even the greater West Michigan area. So thank you, Doug and Janet.
Thank you. Commissioner Pakla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, just a comment to Experience Grand Rapids. I've really enjoyed working with you all over the years. I've had the benefit of having the opportunity to bring conferences here in my previous role in Grand Rapids, and Experience GR has always been very hospitable to those conversations. So thank you for your work. A clarification question. As I read the agreement, Section 5a, it talks about how we are providing Experience Grand Rapids up to but not exceeding 17% of the immediately preceding month's lodging excise taxes. So are we setting it at 17% or are we setting it up to 17%? I'm just trying to understand that portion of the agreement, because we've talked about 17%.
Right.
But I don't read exactly 17% there.
It would be 17%.
Okay. So even though it would, even though the language says up to 17%, we would simultaneously be voting to 7 at 17%.
Correct.
Okay. And our previous agreement had an escalating percentage, is that correct?
There's been a number of different ways it's been done in the past. In the past, there was a lower percentage, and it had a kicker if certain goals were met, and then it went from 18 to 18.5%, maybe just before I got here, back here. But it's slowly been going up over the years. As our number of assets, as our number of attractions go up, that has gone up as well.
And so this is just a simplification of it, no kickers, no additional accelerations or anything like that? Then my other question is, you know, I just finished in the previous resolution praising all of the information and answers we got. The one question that I asked during the conversation, which I don't think I got an answer to, was the increase in revenues here being sent over to Experience Grand Rapids is about $1.5 million a year.
1.3.
1.3, okay. So, you know, based on the numbers that we got back in our responses, that's just under 10% of their current total budget of about $14 million.
Correct.
And just over 50% increase in what we currently allocate to them.
Yes.
Somewhere around there. What I don't think I really understand is what exactly is that extra 50% of our allocation or the 10% of the overall budget going to get, right? I mean, in a normal RFP process, we would hear someone coming back to say, I need X amount of dollars to do Y work. I don't have clarity around that to understand what is happening with these extra allocations. Obviously, I have enjoyed what my work has been with Experience Grand Rapids, but I don't have clarity around that answer.
My understanding and talking to Director Small is, once the decision's made, they will engage in putting together their marketing plan for the total amount of 8% as opposed to the 5% that they've known. So they continuously are working on the marketing for the 5%, and they will work on that. But my understanding is, it does take a big lift to market to major new attractions, and that's where they're going to focus a fair amount of the, you know, the amount.
Okay. And, you know, similar to Commissioner Ponstein's comments, I trust that that conversation at the Administrator's level has been well researched and that you wouldn't bring this forward to us unless you were comfortable with sort of that level of agreement.
That is correct.
Got any more?
Yeah. I just wanted to mention that Commissioner Hildenbrand and I represent the county on the Experience Grand Rapids Board of Directors, and I did want to say that Experience Grand Rapids is just like the county or a city or many other kinds of public and nonprofit organizations, where compensation of employees and directors is set to be competitive, because whenever you have an organization, you want it to be the best. And so that's why, and so that's when our board looks at things like that, we're looking to make sure that we're not non-competitive for the talent we're trying to attract. Now, I have to say, not making this about Doug's salary, but I did see him mouth "I wish" when the $400,000 was mentioned. So I'm hoping that doesn't become the new negotiating point at Experience Grand Rapids. So anyways, that's it.
As I told Mike, do not confuse this with contract negotiations. All right. Did you have more, or is that? Okay. Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. I think I started here almost 16 years ago when we first created Experience Grand Rapids in the Sports Commission. And I am going to support this amendment out of respect for both Doug, especially with Experience Grand Rapids, and for Mike Gusweiler and the work they do. I've watched them grow and do the things that they said they were going to do, and it's been a huge boost to this area. Although I oppose the excise taxes, I made clear earlier, I'm going to vote yes for this out of just total respect for the work they do and will continue to do. They are about as professional an organization as I've ever seen. That's in public-private partnerships. They just exceeded all my expectations. So Doug, I appreciate all your work, and Gus, keep up the good work. Thanks.
All right. Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. Just to further clarify, given that this is an agreement between a public entity and a nonprofit that while partially governed by appointees from the county is its own entity, this agreement's bilateral in the sense that you've, the new percentage has already been negotiated, there's been expressed belief that both boards will accept it, but for instance, in the hypothetical that this was denied, we would revert back to the 18.5% and they'd get more money, or if this body.
For one year.
For one year. Or this body decided to revise to a different percentage, their body would still have to accept it as well, and if they don't, it would revert back to the current agreement, correct?
It is a negotiation for an agreement that runs out at the end of 2025.
And that both parties have to approve.
That both parties approve.
Yeah. You know, ultimately, while I certainly have some concern with such a large increase from this body to this organization, regardless of the great work they do and the express need for it, I do also understand that, you know, voting no would mean additional funds would go there. I think my only hesitancy is, when we're hearing the conversations about, from the public and others, about arts infrastructure, about smaller community cultural assets and community cultural programming that also drive tourism, making sure that that's not lost in the conversation. And so I think what might be helpful is hearing, maybe not now, but hearing in the future from Experience GR, work they've done in the past to support venues or support activities that are outside of the DDA boundaries, and any plans to help further promote such venues and ways that they can plug in the complementary activities that we're going to see from these new anchor assets to the smaller neighborhood and community assets. We have an amphitheater, it's going to have public venue, that's going to have public performances, we have the smaller performance halls, many of whom had representatives here today. I can't help but think that there's ways that we can create complementary programming that benefit both of them. We have a potential soccer stadium potentially coming down the pike, we have a number of different soccer associations, soccer facilities, that could also, again, drive people to visit this community, to take advantage of the many things we have to offer. So just seeing how Experience GR plans to help provide complementary programming to seek both the downtown areas and the surrounding neighborhoods and the surrounding communities of Kent County would just be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I don't see any other hands up, so this is a roll call. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 100, Commissioners Wooden.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Sparks.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Pakla.
Yes.
Oliver King.
Yes.
Merchant.
Stane.
McLeod. LeGrand. Coleman.
Yes.
Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Vice Chair Green.
Yes.
Commissioners Diaz.
No.
DeBoer.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Boujack.
Yes.
Brevi.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 17 yeas, one nay. The motion passes. Resolution 100 is adopted.
Madam Clerk, what was the count?
17 to 1 and 1 abstention.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We'll move to the next and last item for resolution. That is Item K, and I will call on Commissioner Baker.
I move that Resolution 101, the agreement with the City of Grand Rapids for lodging excise tax allocation, that comes to us from the Administrator's Office.
Thank you. Is there support? Boarded by Commissioner Hildebrand. All right. Any additional questions or comments on this one? Commissioner Ponstein.
I'll just make it quick. In my positions at the county associations meeting, I just want to say how lucky we are that we have a city and county that talk to each other. There are some cities and counties that don't do that.
Thank you. Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. As I've spoke previously, you know, when talking about these anchor assets and proposed for our downtown area, I have often thought, while I'm not necessarily as convinced that they could be as transformational as spoken about, simply because while we've been successful in the past, previous success doesn't always indicate future success, but I am hopeful. But most importantly, this I see as the most sensible way to fund such assets, making sure that we are not diverting revenues that would support other vital services, making sure that we are taking revenues that are integrally tied with how many people stay in our hotels to fund venues that bring people to hotels. But what I appreciate the most about this agreement is the creation of the debt reserve account, because as we've seen in the past, when we've used lodging excise tax revenue to pay for bonds for the DeVos place, we've had two occasions, mind you, one was a once-in-a-century recession, and the other one was a once-in-a-century pandemic, but we've had two incidences where our revenue... bonds for the DeVos place, we've had two occasions, mind you, one was a once-in-a-century, near once-in-a-century recession, and the other one was a once-in-a-century pandemic. But we've had two instances where our revenues were not substantial to cover debt service on those bonds and had to dip into general fund revenues to pay for it. Having this debt reserve account to help safeguard that will not only help protect our finances, but the city finances as well, and appreciate that foresight in this agreement. And why, for that and many other reasons, I'll be voting for this today.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? I see none. Madam Clerk, this is a roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 101, Commissioners Wooden...
Yes.
Teal...
Yes.
Sparks...
Yes.
Ponstein...
Yes.
Peckla...
Yes.
Oliver King...
Yes.
Merchant...
Stane.
McLeod...
Coleman...
Yes.
Hildenbrand...
Yes.
Hennessy...
Yes.
Vice Chair Green...
Yes.
Commissioners Diaz...
No.
DeBoer...
Yes.
Burl...
Yes.
Boujack...
Yes.
Breevy...
Yes.
Baker...
Yes.
Antor...
Chair Steck... Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 16 yays, one nay, one abstention. The motion passes. Resolution 101 is adopted.
Thank you. I should state on the record that Commissioner Merchant's request for abstention on the last two, this one and the last one, was also reviewed and approved, so. All right. That is the end of our resolutions for the day, and brings us to the second opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone from the public that wishes to address the Commission on matters of our general jurisdiction, may do so at this time. You have up to three minutes. Please identify yourself by name and your address. And do we have, do we have cards on this one, too?
We do have cards, Mr. Chair.
Oh, all right. Let's take the cards first, then.
Okay. First up is going to be a little bit of a surprise, but his name is Eric. He'll tell you his last name.
Eric?
Eric. Uh, that's a good question. Eric E. something?
There's two Ericks. Look at that.
All right.
Well, that's the surprise.
Uh, well, that's two.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chair. Thank you for allowing us to be here. I do celebrate 25 years of being in the United States. I've celebrated it last November, have become a citizen of the United States in 2000, but have come to this country in 1998. I have a lot of thoughts to share, but without further ado, I'd like to express also that I'm a Christian, I'm a follower of Christ, and I just want to share a few passages of Scripture. And the first one is from Deuteronomy 30:19 and 20. "I call heaven and earth as witness today against you that I have set before you life and death, blessing and cursing; therefore choose life, that both you and your descendants may live, that you may love the Lord your God, that you may obey his voice, and that you may cling to him, for he is your life and the length of your days, and that you may dwell in the land which the Lord swore your fathers to Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob to give them." And the next passage is from first, from the Book of Psalm 139:13 and 14. "For you formed me in my..." "For you formed my inward parts; you cover me in my mother's womb; I will praise you, for I am fearfully and wonderfully made." And the last one is from the Lord Jesus Christ's own words in John 4:4, verse 14. "But whoever drinks of the water that I shall give him will never thirst; but the water that I shall give him will become in him a fountain of water springing up into everlasting life. We believe that the unborn has that same value." Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric, could you pronounce your last name for me?
Everett.
I knew it, I just didn't want to say it because it was, it was not very neat.
British.
Very good. Let's go ahead with the second Eric, Eric Mondai?
Yes, he said it right.
Good morning.
Good morning. Hello, my name is Eric Mondai. I just came to briefly speak on behalf of the Four Star Theater, and where they maybe could fit in with some of these hotel taxes coming in, since he's reopened his door in the last year or so. We've been able to host some community events there for the youth and adults, well, I currently have a national recording artist coming to perform there September 28th. So, you know, we're booking the artists that come from out of the state, and they, they have to spend the night in hotels and use their entourage, and people travel, so it'd be nice to see Four Star benefit from some of these things. You've got these great venues coming along, but unfortunately, they're dominated by Live Nation and AIE or whatever the other booking agencies are. It's harder for us independent promoters and community people to get events going there, so it'd be awesome to see some of this effect, some of these taxes trickle down in the neighborhood, southeast side, and Marcus has been great, Four Star's been giving us a chance to do things. I'm brief, I just wanted to speak on his behalf, and maybe you guys will think about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Amy Hinman.
Good morning.
Good morning. It's good to see you all again. I'm here with Save John Ball Park, and just wanted to articulate that we had accepted this body's vote back in January regarding the 2023 proposed parking amendment that the zoo had put forward, and we're looking forward to moving forward in partnership and collaboration with the county and zoo. Upon hearing some of the points articulated during the August 8 work session, I thought that it might be helpful if I came and offered some clarity and insight into the intent of the property being talked about as the, like, being meant to be taken over as a regional asset and not a neighborhood park. And first, in terms of the interpretations of the deed restrictions. Nothing in the deed language prevents the county from continuing to use parts of the premises as park property. The language requires that the premises be used for a public zoo, but the language is not exclusive and does not prohibit a part of the premises from also being used as a park or green space. Interpreting the language as requiring the entirety of the premises to be used exclusively as a zoo would not be reasonable for several reasons, including the non-exclusive language, the fact that, at the time of the conveyance, the premises were used for both park and zoo purposes, and the fact that the city has never complained in the decades since that the county is in violation of the deed and sales agreement for continuing to use as both. The second item that I wanted to bring up was a memo from the Grand Rapids City Planning Commission. They reviewed what it would, what the impact would be if they removed John Ball Park and Zoo from their master plan, and they had four points, which I'm going to read quickly, but I have printouts for all of you so you can review your ledger. The determination, the release of John Ball Park and Zoo from the master plan will not result in the loss of the use of the zoo and green areas by city residents, and the same is guaranteed in contract with the county, not have a detrimental effect on the neighborhood because of the stated goals of the county for the development are consistent with those of the city, accomplish long-term goal of Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and satisfy the longstanding desire of the Planning Commission and your Grand Rapids Board to foster metropolitan cooperation. I hope you'll give these items some consideration moving forward regarding intent and history when we talk about those things, and I hope that the insight is helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Daniel Scut.
Good morning again.
Good morning again. I am still Daniel Scut, and from earlier, I still live in Kent County. Haven't moved. I do not rejoice in anyone's death, but I do rejoice when lives are saved from death. For it was the night of August 23rd, almost one year ago, that the Almighty Lord God proclaimed enough is enough. He took the life of Thomas Gordon, the butcher of 320 East Fulton. Estimates are that he personally murdered and butchered between 50,000 and 60,000 precious babies, ripping them apart limb by limb, right up to and often after birth. Stop and think about that. 50,000 to 60,000 at 320 East Fulton, less than two miles from where we stand and sit. But the night of August 23rd, the Lord said enough. That was the night the Lord sent that tornado and high winds through northern Kent County. And as the news of Mr. Gordon's widow later reported, in the midst of that storm, Mr. Gordon was experiencing a heart attack. His wife called for an EMT unit, but they said they could not get to him because of the multiple downed trees in their way. She then called for the EMT helicopter, but they said they could not come to him because of the dangerous high winds. So, he died. In the words of his wife, it was, quote, "A violent death." I could not help but think of the Holy Scriptures that say, "If we sow peace, we will reap peace; if we sow violence, we will reap violence." Those precious babies died violent deaths, violent deaths. I've shown you pictures, I've tried to articulate it. Mr. Gordon died a violent death. But now sadly, the same violence, the same bloodshed, the same genocide is taking place at 425 East Cherry at a place called Planned Parenthood, two miles from where we are right They found someone who could replace Mr. Gordon. No wonder we have so many troubles in Grand Rapids and Kent County. I appeal to you, please do all you can, lift your voice. If you believe in prayer, pray that this violence would stop. Thank you.
Next, we have Juan Garcia.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Juan Garcia of 50 Valley Avenue. I'm a small business owner, a father in the West Side neighborhood, and living a couple of blocks away from what is left of John Ball Park. I'm a father of three, my eldest being six, and one of my kids who is currently wheelchair-bound and who utilizes mobility accessibility features. For six years, we have enjoyed the green space and the parks in, at John Ball Park, though the last year has been a little bit rough, as we are dodging zooming cars, going through green spaces, and having to patch up skinned knees due to just an excess amount of gravel over the green spaces where my children's soccer fields used to be. Commissioners, I've come before you to offer some information regarding the intended use of that land that was set forth by the county commissioners of 1987. I have a little bit of literature that I'll be passing out at the end. And I'd like to take this moment to highlight certain elements of that, of that document. On page two, it says, you'll find the passage, it says, "I have not heard," and this is coming from, I believe, Commissioner Meriwether of the time, "I have not heard them," I assume it's the county, "address the neighborhood's recent fears about the future of their neighborhood park facilities and the feared absence of a sensitivity to neighborhood concerns and future development of the zoo under county ownership. This issue that was foreseen almost 30 years ago is becoming a reality today." They were on to something. Another quote on page three of this commission resolution from '87 says, "We, as members of the Kent County Board of Commissioners, would like to restate to the community their commitment not only to operate John Ball Zoo in a responsible manner, but to be a good neighbor and to maintain John Ball Park as quality neighborhood park." I say that the zoo has not been behaving as a good neighbor according to the way that I would subjectively maybe interpret how that phrase is. I realize it's a subjective term. I would not interpret that as a good, the current actions as good neighbors. The park has not been kept up as a quality neighborhood park, seeing as we have lost and continue to lose more areas for myself and for my children to be able to enjoy, as we watch cars drive over green spaces that are unintended for parking, and to drive over sidewalks to illegally access the roads, and speeding down the gravel road that has been outlined there. The zoo is a benefit for families and kids, yes, for those who are seeking to learn more and to experience wildlife and animals, and who are okay spending money to do so, though a park is intended to be a versatile space that can be enjoyed by all for many community purposes without the burden of overcoming a financial burden.
Thank you.
All in there. Thank you.
And next, we have Dee Jones.
Last but not least. How you doing, everybody? I'm Dee Jones. Had to bring this signed football again that I got from the Detroit Lions because only spoke to finance committee, not the full board. I brought kids from Kent County Surveillance and Probation to the Lions facility, and it was super cool. It was a beautiful experience. I just had to bring this again. I'm not going to give the whole spiel on how, all of the cool things, but I will highlight some things. We got to get Barry Sanders called in front of us, we got to go in the Lions locker room, we got to go in the nice suites that are super expensive, you got to be like super rich to even get in those suites or even afford those suites. It was a nice experience. I do also want to say that I don't know how the funding goes from the lodging tax, but I believe that those littler venues deserve some kind of funding, if there is going to be some funding allocated, especially the Four Star Theater. That is where I actually did my first esports events, where I attracted that professional esports league that booked a $100,000 event that didn't happen because it got canceled, but I know that big things can come from those little venues. And so, I also wanted to say, a couple, so a year ago, I actually was at this event, and it was called the Esports and Trade Association. One year ago today, I was in Chicago, and that's where I connected with my friend from Epic Games, who I ended up connecting Epic Games all across the United States and KDL as they invested in esports. There's an educator that works at GRCC, and I remember going to the DeVos place, and I was looking at the schedule, and it was somebody that actually uses Fortnite to educate his students, and I'm like, all right, I got to go speak to this guy because I have to introduce him to KDL, because I believe education is very important, I believe libraries are very important to communities. And so, I used to go to the libraries, I used to get on the internet when I didn't have internet, or my brothers would be hogging up the AOL internet, and I'd be, had to get on some kind of internet to speak to the girls and stuff like that. So, I used to go to the libraries and stuff like that, but I ended up connecting this educator to KDL, and he developed this esports competition in partnership with KDL and an organization called NASEF. They just thought it was going to be a general competition, they didn't expect the high participation, but cool to say that this educator that works at GRCC that partnered with KDL developed a global competition, and 200 kids from across the nation competed, I mean, 200 kids across the globe competed in this esports Fortnite design competition started here in Kent District Libraries in Kent County. So, I know big things can happen, I know if we pour into our community, if we connect our educators and we be community connectors and not stop opportunities from happening, that big things can happen, and global things can happen from Kent County. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is...
That was my last card, Mr. Chair.
All right. Is there anyone else that wishes to address us with respect to general jurisdiction matters? If so, you have up to three minutes.
Hi again, Marcus Ringnalda, Gaines Township resident. Just wanted to speak a little bit to some of the feedback on the comment today. I appreciate your consideration. I know this doesn't happen today, and that you guys all have a lot to work through. But just to address, you know, from my unique perspective, some of the funding considerations, the hotel excise tax is a great way to fund ventures that apply to the confines of the statute, for sure. But these funding pieces don't happen in a vacuum. One commissioner mentioned 60-plus million dollars of public funds. So, from the perspective of the public, you know, this is a piece of a very large pie, and sometimes public funds stack upon one another, and it's not exactly efficient. You know, the most recent news is that a transformational brownfield may be part of this capital stack. That's for vacant, blighted, and underutilized properties that, $24 million was paid for that vacant, blighted, and underutilized property as part of this development, if I'm not mistaken. So, just when I talk about cost and benefit, what you have before you is a piece of a large puzzle, and what, you know, I've been through the wringer in front of this board over the last couple of years, but it is the stories, some of the stories you heard today... And, you know, I'll talk about the Four Star Theater. We got a half-million-dollar ARPA allocation, and on Friday, we have $150,000 of mechanical equipment being delivered to go on that roof and bump our occupancy from 250 to 600 after subsequent approvals. Still going to work on that marquee. There's a strategy to this. And our roof has been on just about a year. Guy who grew up two blocks from that place, I helped him start his own business. He knows everything about flat roofing. And guess what? He was way under budget, and helped him launch a business based around building something. The company that's putting the heating and cooling in is from a mile away, R&amp;R Mechanical. Ask these folks, too, about the impact that's being made in their community and that, to address some of the, you know, concerns about giving money to a nonprofit, is like, sometimes you can trust us to be really, really good stewards of public funds. So leave you with that, and thanks for your consideration going forward. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? I don't see anyone else, so we'll move to our next item, which is administrative report.
And I will thin it down today. I did do on a couple of, I wanted to do a couple of shout-outs. So we have Matt Grocer, our Emergency Management Director. Tomorrow is Matt's last day. He has done a phenomenal job for Kent County. So thank you, Matt. We appreciate you. And then also, we have two of our MAC lobbyists with us today. We have Madeline Fada and Samantha Gibson. Raise your hands. Welcome. You chose a great meeting to come to. And we, they do, really do really good work with Dean of Bosworth, representing counties throughout Michigan. I can always count on them to be up to speed on the legislation. They reach out when they need information. So they're definitely doing the job for us. So thank you for being here. And I'd also like to just thank, you know, everyone involved in the budget process. I did appreciate the comments that if people just come to board meetings, it can seem like, you know, things roll along and that the board isn't engaged. But that's why we have a committee system, and we do have robust discussions at the committee sessions. There's more research asked for. So by the time it gets here, the presumption is it's pretty much ready to go. And unless something has more of a public interest or a public, if there's controversy, then our meetings tend to go a little longer. But certainly, that's the case with the budget. The budget's about a year-long process. The board is involved at many points throughout the year. We do capital budgets, personnel requests, operating budgets. And so this is certainly the culmination of a lot of work. And obviously, to Jeff and Marvin and the fiscal staff and all the other staff and all the other departments that worked so hard to pull this together, I do thank you as well. And with that, I think I can probably leave it alone for today.
All right. Thank you. We'll then move to reports. Does any commissioner have a report to make? Mr. Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. And I welcome my colleague, Commissioner Green, to add to any of this if I miss anything. But the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority met last week. We continue to deliberate on our, not our bylaws, but our policies for Brownfield TIF capture definitions, whether to incorporate the MISHDA process for the expanded Brownfield use for housing or to develop our own, finding ways to make sure that the process we put in place will be workable for both rental and homeownership opportunities. But most notably, we, the county has now noticed a position for, I think it's a community development coordinator position. It is essentially folding the responsibilities that Matthew Channing held previously around the apparatus on farmland preservation, and then adding in addition, expanding our Brownfield Redevelopment Authority and ramping up this new service that we will be providing to Kent County residents. And so anyone who's interested in that role, who has a background in public administration, community development, ag preservation, and brownfield redevelopment, it's on our website.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Diaz.
Thank you, Chair. I think it was since our last full board meeting, there was news from the administration. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank those of you commissioners, well, to tell the chair to express my thanks to commissioners who have done the work on the Affordable Housing Roving Lawn Fund, almost $10 million, if I'm getting the figures correct. Were approved for different projects throughout the county. Just those approvals will bring hundreds of new housing units to Grand Rapids and Wyoming. And so thank you to those of you who are doing that work, and I look forward to seeing even more units being built in the future so that we can try and make some, get some momentum going on the amount of units that we need every year because we're falling further and further behind. And so hopefully, this fund will do some work in getting us ahead of. And then lastly, September 13, 14, and 15, right down here at Calder Plaza, the Mexican Festival, the yearly Mexican Festival will be going on. If you're in need of some good food, good music, good time, bring yourself, your family and friends down. It'll be a great time. I, myself, will be in Mexico City, celebrating Mexico's independence, but it'll be a good time. But that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports? If not, I have two items. Chair appointments. I am appointing Commissioner Hildebrand to the West Michigan Regional Planning Commission and Commissioner Merchant to the Art Prize Steering Committee, subject to this board's approval.
I'd like to move that we accept the chair's recommendation and make the appointments to the West Michigan Regional Planning Commission and Art Prize Steering Committee.
And supported. No discussion, all those that, Commissioner Coleman was the supporter. All those that support, please say yes.
Yes.
Those say no? Great. And thank you to, well, thank Commissioner Hildebrand later. Thank you, Commissioner Merchant, for agreeing to serve in that role. That moves us to miscellaneous, if we're not there already. Commissioner Bunnstein.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Steck. So at the legislative meeting, I talked about a colleague, Dean Canepa, from Alleghan County, that passed away suddenly. Alleghan and Kent County have had long years of relationships. Dean was a pillar of that community, and he's going to be sorely missed. I also want to acknowledge two guests here today. I'm not going to let them off as easy as Al did. Sometimes people ask what the value of the Michigan Association of Counties really is. We've got two examples here with Samantha Gibson and Madeline Fada. Under Dean of Bosworth's guidance and the tool of them, you got a wonderful gift. You don't have to run every two years anymore. On a job that someone said no one could ever get this pass, we got the four-year terms passed for county commissioners. And that, in part, is something that the Government Affairs Staff works on. But that's not the only thing they work on. They work on the septic codes, the courts, anything that has a potential effect, good or bad, on counties, they're on the front line. They're one of the most respective lobbying group in Lansing when it comes to county affairs and just anything in general. I've talked to state reps, state senators, and they all have a, just a great opinion of how they present themselves and how they work for counties and the betterment of the state of Michigan. So I want to thank you personally. I've had a little closer look at them with my work on the Board of Directors of MAC, but we're lucky. We're a large county. We do have our own lobbyists, but to have them there with them cooperating with both sides just makes it a lot easier when an issue does come up. We've got people on the front line for that. And there's other ways they reach out. We have podcasts. Their faces are normally on there. Much more pleasant than Steve Curry, but we'll leave that for another moment. But, you know, they send out emails all the times. We've got our legislative priorities now set for the upcoming year. If anyone wonders how those get all taken care of, we have standing committees at the association. All you have to do if you want to sit on one is just put an application in saying, "I'd like to sit on this committee." It's a presidential appointment from there, but normally, if you ask to be on, you would. And that's where we get our legislative priorities. It doesn't come from the Board of Directors or the staff. It comes from the members of the counties. And appreciate the support. And I just wanted to point out, we have a great value in our membership to the Michigan Association of Counties. So thank you.
Thank you. And on behalf of the entire commission, thank you for all your work. Any other miscellaneous? Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you. Also on the call, it'll be this weekend, will be the Dzjanki Festival, the Fall Harvest Festival celebrated by the Polish community. And they'll be granting their awards to a Citizen of the Year, and it's Garry Zatko, who owns Lewandowski's Market and has been, you know, very tireless in support of all of his activities for the Polish community over many, many years. And he's a former firefighter, and I believe he worked for Kent County for a while as well. So I'm, you know, join us, 7 o'clock tomorrow when we present the proclamation. And this is something that in the past, the chair and I have done jointly as commissioners who are among the two of the three who represent portions of the West Side.
They welcome us, Hollanders. Mr. Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. First, I just want to thank my father for attending this morning. It, you know, just while I scramble to figure out who I should bring, because I like to bring someone to offer invocation, because while I consider myself somewhat eloquent, praying is always a little bit more difficult for me to find the right words, at least publicly. But appreciated the time we got to spend together this morning. I do want to at least clarify, because I believe in my comments I shared, yes, I am less comfortable, uncomfortable, hesitant to award dollars to private facilities. That also comes with the fact that, you know, I would much, be much more comfortable if we had a program properly defined, not just a set aside for smaller venues, for smaller facilities. And so as we're having these discussions about how to spend the remaining dollars, I certainly would entertain such a prospect, but further details are needed. And I think we could take a guidance from different cultural arts organizations, public cultural arts departments, on how we can best do that in a way that also ensures the other proposed assets are properly financed. So just wanted to make sure I clarified that, and I appreciate everyone's time today. Thank you.
Thank you. Other miscellaneous? Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, I'll follow on, clarifying my comments, too. I was aware that we were going to be discussing allocations later, so I apologize for making that seem like we were making that decision today. And secondly, I also want to show appreciation, certainly for Administrator Vannenber, I mean, we have been discussing this conversation, so there's certainly no adversarial discussion about arts versus sports. I know that Al is a supporter of this and is looking for this. And I also know clearly that the voters are voting on a couple of specific items, and so I really do appreciate that we're having a conversation about perhaps considering a solution to that. So it's very important to know that this is not public versus county. This is very much a part of the conversation. Secondly, along with that, though, and I do need to be aware of my tone at times, but, you know, Commissioner Hennessy has been kind of carrying the burden of these new developments on the impact of her community on the West Side. And I think that as we consider individual things like amphitheater, soccer stadium, aquarium, zoo, that we recognize that we are having a holistic impact on that community combined. And I appreciate Commissioner Hennessy for raising those issues, and I think that we all have to kind of keep that in mind. We would not want to be imposing that much potential impact on a different community in the county area without being mindful of the long-term impacts for the whole, for the people that live there. So just wanted to suggest that. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? If not, just a parting comment. I want to thank all of my colleagues for the consideration, the hard work that you've put in. We made some really big and tough decisions today, and decisions that required all of us to roll up our sleeves and engage. We didn't start from the same place in this regard. Some of us disagreed. Some of us got there a different way, and maybe we still don't agree on everything. But everyone has been respectful in this process, and I think this demonstrates how effectively we can be, even in a contentious environment. So thank you for your hard work. With that, Commissioner Wooden, you got one more in you?
Thank you, Chair. I moved to adjourn, subject to the call of the chair, to Thursday, September 12, 2024, at 8:30 a.m. for an official meeting.
All in sports, yes. We are adjourned. Thank you.